All righty. Call to order, the Monday, February 3rd, 2020, meeting of the City of Falls Church Planning Commission. Ms. Bazemore, could you cause a roll, please?
Mr. Rincon.
Here.
Mr. Krasner.
Here.
Mr. Wadiska.
Here.
Ms. Peets.
Here.
Ms. Weiss.
Here.
Mr. Stevens.
Here.
Mr. Puentes.
Here.
All righty, full house. Now, if I could get a motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No, all right, we have an agenda. Number three, I mean, number four. Receipt of petitions for items not on the agenda. Do we have any? Anyone here want to speak about something that's not on the agenda? Take that as a no. We do not have a speaker series today, so we are on to number six. Our action items, the first one up is the Natural Resources Comprehensive Plan update, public hearing and action. I'm guessing someone's going to present something.
So we have Kate Walker here from staff to present tonight. I will just introduce the item. The request of the planning commission is to hold a public hearing, adopt and make a recommendation of the council on this comprehensive plan draft. So staff's recommending that the planning commission adopt the environmental for everyone, environmental sustainability, resilience and natural resources chapter of the city's comprehensive plan as an update to and replacement of the existing natural resources and environment chapter of the city's comprehensive plan. So you've, as you can see by the timing chart in here, this item has been going on since 2018 and has an entire page of groups and events. And so we're on February 3rd now, and Kate is here to just give you a brief update and then we'll discuss further and then action.
Sounds good.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for your patience. This is indeed the 28th public meeting on this subject. In addition, we've had six hours of public conversations during outreach at the farmer's market and at Mr. Brown's Park. We've had an online survey and a paper survey and enormous input and engagement from the community on this topic. And I think you're all familiar with what the chapter says, and I really appreciate all the support that you have given me, but also the support of the community, my fellow staff members, all the people who are involved in the city. This has been a major project, but I think we've reached a plan that we can work with. It's not perfect. You know, there are a lot of action items. We can't do all of them, but it gives us a vision of where we want to go and a path to get there. And I think it's a great achievement for our community. So thank you all for your support.
Well, thank you and all, everyone on staff that has put so much time into it. It's great, personally, I think it's great to see that the community cares so much about it, to have that many public hearings on it. I think this will be quick, but do we have any comments? I don't think this is any different than the last time we saw it.
Tim very kindly pointed out, we have reintroduced the typographical error in the resolution. So I will fix it back from could to should.
All right, so a little tweak to the last we're asked. Does anyone have any comments about this before we get a motion on it? No, we're good? All right. Could I get a motion? It's a nice juicy one.
It's, Mr. Chair, I'm happy to do this, but it's a very long-winded resolution.
That's all right.
Bear with me.
Twenty-eight meetings is worth a long-winded.
I see, it'll be short by comparison. And I should just say preliminarily, thank you very much, Ms. Walker, for all the effort that you put into this. It really does bring our Chapter 5 up to date in a very positive way that reflects, I believe, the desires of the community. So thank you again for all of that. And so with that, whereas the Virginia Code, Section 15.2-2223, provides that the comprehensive plan is general in nature and is designed to guide and accomplish a coordinated, adjusted and harmonious development of the city, which will, in accordance with present and probable future needs and resources, best promote the health, safety, morals, convenience, prosperity and general welfare of the city and its inhabitants. And whereas Chapter 5 of the city's comprehensive plan, Environment for Everyone, Environmental Sustainability, Resilience and Natural Resources chapter of the city's comprehensive plan, will replace the existing chapter, Natural Resources and the Environment, and will provide the city council and city staff with updated valuable information regarding an environmental sustainability and resilience on which to base planning decisions. And whereas, Section 17.04 of the city charter makes the planning commission responsible for preparation of the city's comprehensive plan. And whereas, Section 17.06 of the city charter enables the planning commission to prepare and adopt individual components of the comprehensive plan. And whereas, Section 15.2-2228 of the state code also gives the city council the authority to grant final approval to comprehensive plan changes previously approved by the planning commission. And whereas, Environment for Everyone, Environmental Sustainability, Resilience and Natural Resources chapter of the city's comprehensive plan was developed with substantial public engagement that included community meetings, a survey and review by the city's advisory boards and commissions. And whereas, Environment for Everyone, Environmental Sustainability, Resilience and Natural Resources chapter of the city's comprehensive plan describes and maps the city's natural resources. Whereas, Environment for Everyone, Environmental Sustainability, Resilience and Natural Resources chapter of the city's comprehensive plan identifies a new chapter vision which supports and advances the city's Falls Church 2040 vision. Whereas, Environment for Everyone, Environmental Sustainability, Resilience and Natural Resources chapter of the city's comprehensive plan sets goals for climate, air and energy, stormwater, streams, natural springs, urban forests and biodiversity, consumption and waste, and community in the context of sustainability and resilience. And whereas, Environment for Everyone, Environmental Sustainability, Resilience and Natural Resources chapter of the city's comprehensive plan identifies strategies and actions that should be pursued to implement the Falls Church 2040 vision and the new chapter vision. Now therefore, be it resolved by the planning commission of the City of Falls Church, Virginia, that, one, Chapter 5, Environment for Everyone, Environmental Sustainability, Resilience and Natural Resources chapter of the city's comprehensive plan, which is attached hereto, is hereby adopted by the planning commission as an updated and revised Environment and Natural Resources chapter of the city's comprehensive plan, replacing the version of Chapter 5 that was adopted on October 24th, 2005, as part of the 2005 comprehensive plan. And two, that the planning commission recommends that the city council grant final approval of the amendment to the comprehensive plan to replace the existing Chapter 5 of the comprehensive plan with Environment for Everyone, Environmental Sustainability, Resilience and Natural Resources chapter of the city's comprehensive plan.
Thank you. Anyone up for giving that a second?
Second.
All right, second. Before we vote, maybe a shorter title next time. Otherwise outstanding. We can vote on this, but any final comments? Again, I echo everything Mr. Stevens said earlier. I think this is an outstanding update that's way past overdue, and I'm glad we got it done.
Indeed.
All right, I guess, take a vote here.
Mr. Rincon.
Yes.
Mr. Krasner.
Yes.
Mr. Wadiska.
Yes.
Mr. Puentes.
Yes.
Ms. Peets.
Yes.
Ms. Weiss.
Yes.
Mr. Stevens.
Yes.
All right, well, thanks again for all your work on that. Hopefully, we will give it another update in less than 15 years.
Thank you.
All right, moving along. 6B, annual work plan. I think you guys were waiting for me to come back to do this. Hopefully, this will be quick. I don't know if you guys have anything to present on it?
In terms of, we're asking you to adopt your work plan for 2021 tonight. The planning commission's requested to first review and approve that for this evening. Based on the discussions in January at the annual meeting in advance, the commissioners have identified three priority areas for the year, and based upon those priorities, our current project workload, staff resources, we prepared a work plan that covers five work areas. That's the West Falls Church project and small area plans, comprehensive plan updates, climate change and green infrastructure, number three, zoning ordinance and future land use map updates, number four, and the fifth area is transportation. There's a table that's attached that details the work plan and the subcategories within these five areas. So we're happy to have any further discussion and finalize this tonight. Thank you.
All right, thank you. I looked at this, it seemed to capture pretty well what I thought we had done, but I'm sure of some discussion. And I guess my one question is, to the extent possible, should we try to go ahead and come up with champions of these various things like we did for many of the ones last year? Yeah, champions?
Yeah.
All right, well, first of all, do you, any thoughts on how this is laid out? Does this match up with what you guys had in mind?
It does. I only had one question on timing, and that was with the cop plan updates, facilities and utilities chapter. I'm assuming that done in back-to-back quarters is that the staff believes that that's going to be a simple chapter to update?
It's something that we've started to draft in terms of both of these chapters. I'm not sure what the status of each of them are, but it's something that we're working on at the same time, so yes.
Okay.
I have the same question on timing, just having watched the environmental chapter take 28 meetings. And I had another question on review of single-family development regulations, that is laid out over three quarters. And I guess, does the staff believe that is reasonable, given, I think, not too distant history when others have looked at this? Is a three-quarter process achievable? And have you thought about maybe like what the initial steps are?
I think they're, Paul's still working on the, some details of the scope of that. You know, as you know, we've had, you know, recent issues with some of the subdivisions and so forth. So I think we're kind of looking, taking a step back, looking at things comprehensively. And so there's been some discussions along those lines. So once we develop that a little further, we'll inform you of that, and you can comment on that and the priority.
Yeah, I think, I mean, I think there could be a whole quarter of just works, public meetings, you know, throughout this whole process.
What I'm curious, like, we, that came up during the advance, but I don't recall talking about much details about what the heck we're actually talking there. So I'd be curious to see what Mr. Studdard's high-level initial pass is.
Yeah, I think, I think we were looking at some issues that were known, and I think with some of the subdivision issues that popped up since then, in advance, that there, you know, there may be some further discussion.
Yeah.
Would this include the subject of ADUs?
In terms of, let's see.
Accessory or affordable?
Accessory.
Yeah.
Either way.
I'm not, I'm not seeing it listed on here. I wasn't at the advance, but we can ask that question. I mean, you know, single-family development regulations could include ADUs under multifamily category, so.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's, it will be interesting to tackle that, because it's going to be, a lot of people will be interested in it, so I don't know. I mean, I think having a rough timeline in here makes sense. It'll be, I think fairly early on, we'll be able to sense if it's going to be realistic. But I think until we do that first cut, it'll be hard to say.
Yeah, I guess on that first work session, we can kind of go through the options and decide what things to try to tackle and what to leave alone.
Yeah, or prioritize them and see if there's any low-hanging fruit and not get that caught up with.
And I kind of feel like it's not just single-family, too. It's, I mean, one of the things that's caught up is like, like townhouses. We haven't had townhouses in 30 or 40 years because the rules are really tight on those.
Any other general comments?
I had a question on stormwater also. Monitor stormwater task force. I am, which is on the next slide at the top, this has a bearing on CIP, I think especially next year, as if we're proposing new projects next year. I'm curious to get staff's take on the appropriate role for planning commission, but I'm thinking about things like criteria for approving stormwater CIP projects, like has there been green infrastructure envisioned that would offset the cost of gray infrastructure? I mean, do we have sort of a thoughtful approach? Are we just putting in pipes and detention vaults without thinking about a more holistic strategy? So your thoughts on something beyond monitoring and how we can make sure we're integrating, especially the recommendations from Chapter 5, and that would be helpful.
Yeah, and I assume in the work session tonight, we will get to ask about stormwater and how that relates with CIP and timing and stuff like that. At least I plan to ask about that. All right.
My general comment was, just generally, I didn't, that meeting that we had on the first, on the January 6th, it's being referred to as the annual planning advance. That just was not my view of that meeting. I thought it was, you know, let's talk about our year and upcoming, and let's sort of get our hands around it and what we're trying to focus on. And, I mean, I know we covered a lot of the same topics we did at previous advances, but this just took on a different, that, that meeting to me was sort of a, let's begin discussion, and now it seems to have been overtaking a meeting that I, I thought had some real value beyond what was just accomplished at that one. So I was surprised to read here that that was now our new advance.
I think it was like a mini-advance, you're right.
I never, I mean, when I showed up at the meeting, I think you're right. I mean, it's not like it didn't have a lot of overlap with what we did in the past, but it was a, let's, we're doing our, you know, standard voting on officers, and let's have a, use this time wisely to talk about some topics that are important to us. And I just, it just wasn't characterized that way to me at the time, and I was surprised to see it in here, so. I assume that means we're not having any more meetings, planning meetings for the planning commission for the rest of the year, is the way I'm interpreting this. And then we're now taking action on something like this, that seems new to me as well. But, you know, largely, it captures what we talked about, for sure. I mean, it's not.
Yeah, I mean, we, first of all, we could have whatever meetings we want, so.
But, I mean, you could, you could just put that in your motion on any action you take tonight that you're looking forward to, the opportunity to have a follow-up meeting.
We can change, I mean, do we don't, we have to have a work plan? I mean, we can change anytime we want. I mean, I guess, you know, we shouldn't be locked into the formality of it. I mean, it's, there's no real requirement to have a work plan. I mean, we have certain priorities and we can sort of change them whenever we feel like it, if enough of us agree. So I don't know, I agree, I don't know if we, I don't know. I think that was sort of like a hybrid form of an advance that we had with, that night evening. I don't know if we had thought about it that way.
Well, it's interesting, because I was trying to remember what we did last year, because the weird thing about that meeting was, I wasn't chair yet, no one particularly gave me a heads up about what was going to be in that meeting. I don't, it sounds like you didn't necessarily get, at least if it was conveyed to you, it wasn't conveyed clearly.
It was not conveyed to me that it was an advance. It was, hey, we had, let's not waste the time, all getting together to do a vote that's going to take, you know, 30 seconds and not use the time wisely.
Right.
And so it was, it was never, I mean, there was discussion, like, should we bring food and stuff like that? And I said, you know, sure. It's not that I disagree what's in here, I just was really surprised. It's more of a, you asked for comments, this is a comment.
Yeah, yeah.
But a deviation from previous years.
Right, and that's why I was trying to remember, I don't think we did the advance in the first meeting of the year last year.
No, it was in March.
Sure.
So that's probably part of what caught us off-guard. But I think, to Brett's point, like, this captures what we talked about.
I agree with that.
The calendar stuff is sort of like staff-driven, which is great, they're most likely to know the realistic schedule of these things. But I think to the extent, like, for example, that the question of single-family development regulations, like, that's like a pretty amorphous concept based on that advance that we did, and it probably, whether we wait until whatever that is Q2 to work on it at all, or we try to in the coming months, I guess it'd be interesting if some of these items, we say, hey, let's have a follow-up meeting in February or March where we dig in a little bit and potentially update the work plan based on, on that. You know what I mean? Like, this captured the kind of first-pass, high-level, let's get all of our things on Post-its and shuffle them, but I do think some of them aren't particularly fleshed out at this point and could use additional.
Would inserting the word preliminary?
In terms of the work plan? Yeah, I mean, I'm less, I'm personally not to worry about it, because, like we said, we could change it whenever we want, but it does say draft all over it really big right now.
Yeah, it does. You know, it's, a lot of what's in here, though, at the start of most of these, is a work session.
Yeah.
So I think that that's, the work session is where things will get fleshed out more.
Yeah.
Like, even the facility, facilities and utilities chapter, I was kind of concerned how fast it could, but there is like a kickoff and we'll have a meeting, and we'll get a feel for what it's going to be at that point.
Mm-hmm.
So I don't know if we need to say that, other than, I think all these have to have a kickoff or some kind of work session, so we're going to have that time to flesh it out.
I will make a note that I think next year, regardless of what we do this year, we should maybe have a more robust plan for the advance.
Yeah, we could definitely do that. We can also, you know, since we had a small one, we could plan halfway through the year, have another small one, if we felt like we needed to touch base again.
That's true. Mid-year plan. All right. Any other comments about this? Do we want to try to, are people feeling, I feel like we should try to work on champions for at least many of these, otherwise, I think what we have found in the past, without some sort of champion, things don't make it too far. Do people, people want to volunteer? Yeah, how do we want to do it? Let's start at the top.
I'm not sure that first, my own view is that first one doesn't require a champion.
Yeah.
As we said at the, at the advance, it, that was going to happen anyway, that was...
Yeah, and honestly, the Ten Acre Project and the high school were on last year's work plan without a champion, because they will occur regardless of our...
They had many champions.
Yeah, but we did have the, the west end small area plan, probably could use a champion.
Can I just ask a question about what it means to champion something?
It means it's all your fault if it doesn't pan out. No, I mean, last year, so, I feel like many years ago, we talked about even when we had a lot of special exception projects coming through, and the applicant would come, tell us all stuff, and ask us questions, and it seemed very disjointed, and we had this idea of, you know, if one or two maybe commissioners kind of were the go-to organizer on those things, it might make it more efficient. I don't know if, I don't know if we ever did that on special exception ones, but when we got to the work plan, I think we had the same idea, which is if somebody could, especially if it was somebody that was particularly interested in it, could basically be the person to remind us at various meetings, like, hey, we, remember we said we were going to talk about the TDR, let's get that on the schedule? So it doesn't, there's no formal role, other than just hopefully keeping us honest with our work plan.
Yeah, I think, basically, like, with this facilities and utilities chapter saying we're going to have a kickoff in this first quarter, if something hasn't happened or started to be scheduled by mid-February, that's where you're like, how are we going to do this? When are we doing this? It's more nudging and asking questions.
Yeah.
And I, I think there's also a role, we had in the past established a role, that you would be the liaison with the council and say, hey, this is something that's important to us, we've determined that, we think it's, it's, time has come, is there a way we can get this on the agenda, sort of involve them or include them in the process, so we're not operating in isolation. So it's a, it's not an official, like lobbyist on the issue, but it's like an informal saying, hey, when, this is important, that we, an issue that we've, as you're having contact with council, this is important.
Yeah, because it's kind of like Greenway Downs, like, I've been talking to council people when I get a chance, because our failure there was, we almost finished it, and then we just couldn't get through into the council's agenda, so.
So that's the idea. So it's, you know, I would suggest if someone sees the topics that they're interested in, that would be a great one to volunteer for, because it'll be more fun. We may get to the point where we need to just split up the ones that are less interesting to people, but. So should we just start, I don't think we need one for the Ten Acre Project or the high school. It does seem like it would help to have one for the small area plan. I think technically Russ and I did that last year, I'm happy to continue being at least one of the champions on that one.
I'm happy to help out in that, that's fine.
All right, comprehensive plan updates, these hopefully don't need too much prodding, because staff seems gung-ho, but does anyone want to, we don't need a champion for the thing we just approved, because I think that's locked in.
I'll do that one, I'll do natural resources.
Watch the city council vote it down, and your job just go a lot harder. So facilities, Melissa, you mentioned that?
I can do it.
Melissa's going to do that one. I think that one will be quick. And then the community character appearance and design chapter, that's a little bit.
Media.
Anyone super interested in that? Skip over that one for now. TDR.
I'm interested in that.
Melissa, interested in TDR. Stormwater.
I don't understand.
Because they're fighting over stormwater?
Yes.
All right, Tim and Cory are going to do stormwater. Urban forestry.
Yeah, that's, that's good.
Who loves the trees? Who wants to be the Lorax? Tim will be the Lorax. Risk assessment, I don't even know what that is anymore, of climate risk assessment. Cory will take that one on, all right. Right-of-way design.
I could do that.
Brett, on right-of-way design.
And if you're doing that, you should do that community character appearance and design, because that's kind of reflected in that chapter.
True.
All right. Melissa's trapping people. You're getting all this, I'm kind of blazing through it.
Yeah.
All right. All right, Greenway Downs overlay.
You know, nominally, I was the champion last year, but to be frank, like, you know, I don't know, the staff, it was kind of a group effort, and staff kind of started working on stuff, and so I don't feel like I really did much champion, but...
And hopefully, we're almost done with that. I mean, I let Brett see that to the finish line. Cottage housing. Anybody into that?
Didn't we take action last week?
I think you guys got a, you did a work session, I watched it on video, I had some thoughts, but you did not take action.
No, we just talked about it.
It was late, it was the last thing we did, we were a little punchy, tired.
We asked questions and...
Yeah.
I had some questions.
I mean, we're talking about it, that's what I was, I just thought we had, it was like expiring, and in three years, we had to do something.
It was a work session.
But it was just a work session.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Well, we'll skip that one for now.
I mean, sure, if it's going to happen, I'll do it.
All right, Russ is, Russ is all over it.
I'll do anything that's about to happen.
Review single-family development regulations.
I'll do that.
Melissa. Paper streets, you, you had that one last year, and we made zero progress, so you get it again this year.
Oh, no. Okay.
But look, you got it, you're aiming for Q2 21.
I know, I keep asking about it, though.
All right, pedestrian connectivity and missing links. Missing links, like the Bigfoot?
That's exactly what it means.
Golf course.
We can come back to that one, I might be interested in that.
I'll take it.
You'll take it?
I'll take it.
All right, I'll take that one. Multifamily automobile parking updates.
I'll take that one, too.
All right. That was easy. All right, now we, now we have champions, we've talked about how it was sort of a advanced light, and we might want to circle back down the road. Some of these things are a little vague, so we'll have to work on that, but otherwise, I don't, it seems like, other than just telling you guys thumbs up, we do have a motion.
Yes, we do.
All right, are we good? Do we want to, do we want to call this a preliminary work plan? Would that make everyone feel better?
Makes me feel better.
I'm fine with that.
Okay.
I'll make the motion then.
Okay.
I move that the planning commission adopt the preliminary 2020-2021 work plan.
I'll second.
I guess we'll take a roll call on that.
Mr. Rincon.
Yes.
Mr. Krasner.
Yes.
Mr. Wadiska.
Yes.
Mr. Puentes.
Yes.
Ms. Weiss.
Yes.
Ms. Peets.
Yes.
Mr. Stevens.
All right, thank you. Oh, man, now that we just got done assigning a bunch of people to stuff, we're on to item C, assigning people to other things. Now, I think we're, we have last year's assignments. I'm trying to find my, oh, yeah. Did anyone really hate their assignment last year? Was hoping for something new, really loved their assignment? I'm happy to continue doing the Economic Development Council.
I'll still do CACT and recs and parks.
All right. And Tim does them all, so officially or otherwise.
I don't think we assigned me to EDA. I think it was arts and humanities and housing.
You might have inherited that from Ms. Hockenberry.
You did.
But if, if, if that's not good for you, you can decline. You're out.
I'm out. Well, I mean, I'm more likely to make it to a 7:00 PM meeting on a Tuesday than a 9:30 AM meeting on a Thursday.
Oh, well, there's the Economic Development Council. That's Thursday mornings, which I can do and Tim's there many times.
She's talking about the EDA.
Yeah, EDA is Tuesdays at 7:00 PM, which I don't know, that's good.
We also got that from Mrs. Hockenberry, so.
But, uh, but you don't, I think, Tim, you're still going to try to hit EDA meetings?
Yeah, I guess so.
I have an inside source on the EDA, so my brother's on the EDA.
Somebody really wanted it, I'd give it up, but I'm happy to go to it otherwise.
Yeah.
I don't know that it required two of us historically to attend.
Yeah, I think sometimes it's nice to have two in case, you know, so you don't have to go to all of them. You kind of take turns, but. What about you, Mr. Wadiska?
Someone wants to give up something, um, I'll, I'll take it on.
You need something.
He does, I, you know, I'm sure.
Yeah.
He can be the pinch hitter. Hey, go to the architectural review board meeting.
But do you want to take, do you want to replace Mr. Stevens on EDA? Just since he's on other ones or do you not care or?
I thought he likes to go to those. I thought you were just going anyway, not because it was your lead. I mean, I'm serious.
Some of them, they have interesting topics, others not so much.
I mean, sure, it's okay. I'm not happy to take on stuff.
Brett, do you have any that you don't want to do now?
I, I'm fine. I mean, again, historically, you know, I'm on the historic commission. I, you know, I view the liaison job as not meaning that you need to attend every single meeting that they have. You're not a member of their group.
Yeah, and those guys don't pull off those meetings very often either.
So I've, you know, my, my attendance has been light, I will say, but.
Sufficient.
I've never been, you know, I've never, if an issue has come up, I'm certainly always available to, to liaison with these groups. I will say, you know, they have not really reached out to me. Um, I haven't reached out to them too much either, so I guess it goes both ways. But, um, I'm happy to stay as, if needed, a point of contact to those groups. For me, it just comes down to schedules, you know, weeknights, but.
Yeah.
I'm fine with that. It didn't seem to cause a problem last year that I didn't go to a lot of their meetings, but.
All right. I don't know that they had many meetings.
They had, they had a handful, I think, but.
All right, well, this sounds good. And then one quick thing, Russ, is there any, is there a campus coordinating committee anymore? Is that done?
It's been disbanded, yeah.
Take that off the list, yeah.
So, yeah, so I mean, you can put me on for EDA and, uh, Mr. Stevens.
Just one tomorrow night.
I will not be at tomorrow's night, my tomorrow nights, but, uh, I'll officially take on that role.
That sounds good. And then are we missing anything from here? And, and or, other than the campus coordinating committee, has anything, has anything gone away? No? Seems legit. All right.
I just, well, the stormwater task force is ongoing now and Tim's going to a lot of those. Should we recognize that?
I've only gone to one.
You're going to just only go to one, okay?
I missed the one last week, so they only have a couple more.
They only have a couple more, so maybe we don't need a liaison.
Yeah, all right. All right, I think that's it. We don't need a motion. I think you captured the shuffling a little bit, hopefully.
So, so for the EDA, is it Wadiska and Weiss or is it?
Mr. Stevens and Mr. Wadiska.
Okay.
And then I will stick with the EDC, although Tim's at most of those meetings.
Okay. Thank you.
Private citizen.
As a, yeah, private citizen.
So then the other one, those meetings you don't go to if you work.
Yeah. See, I have the option. I can skip work. It's skipping.
But you're the boss.
Home that I can't do. All right, moving right along. 6D, January 6, 2020 minutes, where we had our very well-planned advance. Did anyone have any thoughts? My thought was, we mentioned me getting elected, but not Brett, or did I miss that?
In the minutes, am I left out? I don't want to be left out.
Yeah, you're right.
That's my, it was a big deal.
Should we mention that?
We had carrots and vegetables. It's over.
I mean, look, I, I think at this point I've chaired as many meetings as Mr. Rankin has just to death. Mine were longer.
Okay, I can drag this one out. Uh, anyway, any other, so I, we might add that in, but otherwise, any other comments about the minutes?
No.
Does someone want to make a motion to approve with an amendment or?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
So moved with the addition of Mr. Krasner's election.
All right.
The glorious.
Glorious election.
Unanimous election, I should point out. Uh, all right, all those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Great. So those minutes with that one addition, I am abstaining from the next set of minutes, although I watched most of it on TV. Any comments on that one? You guys had the speaker series.
It was quite a meeting.
Close session.
It was action-packed.
Yeah.
I mean, we kind of covered the gamut of all the issues we deal with.
Went late.
In one meeting. It did go, we did go late. We needed a motion to extend our time, which I was hesitant to approve.
All right, if you guys are good with it, someone.
I think it's good.
Move.
I move that we approve the minutes of January 21st, 2020.
Second?
Second to Ms. Weiss. All those in favor? Aye, opposed, none, that passes. Great. Plowing through it here. Onto informational items, planning commissioner reports. Do we have any? Anyone have anything to report on?
I have a quick one.
All right.
One's actually a request for staff. Um, I haven't seen a ridership report for the bike share since like September 19th. So I just wondered if we could get those numbers at our next meeting because I'm curious what's happened in the last six months or so.
Sounds good.
And then second, um, last weekend I had a few hours free, so I actually went through about three months of the planning magazine we get. Ooh, I don't know if anyone, did anyone see the December, um, 2019 article about sidewalks and rural environments? Where they're trying to put them like in small towns and, and all that kind of, anyway, it was really interesting where they're putting in like very, basically they're just taking pieces of the road and putting like a, like a bump along between the road where the cars have to be and where people walk just to get something where people can walk along the side of the road. Like they're just, they're doing anything they can to make it walkable. And anyway, so it's, if you still have this one, it was a really good article. And, um, you know, it just shows like they, they're finding less expensive ways to make walking available for them in their smaller communities. So.
All right.
Sounds worthwhile.
Yeah.
Tim, you had a?
Yeah, a couple of meetings. Um, Melissa and I were at the council retreat. Uh, it's kind of a puzzling meeting. They went through all this discussion and that in the end, only the city council had a vote. So it basically, their, their work plan reflects the things that they were already interested in.
Yeah, I would make a point like, so they, everyone there gave idea, information and ideas. And I understand why they voted because it was their work plan, but it was kind of.
Why we were, why were we there?
Well.
Did you feel like you influenced them at all?
No, and I tried, but, um, but I would just say, I think that I thought was, they really did stick to the core things, letter, the issues right now, which is like the stormwater and development.
Walkable city.
Walkable city. So the vision really hasn't changed for the next two years.
All right.
It's unfortunate because there were some more innovative stuff up there, but I guess we're just not at a point where, I think between the West End and other things going on, I think they just weren't willing to.
Maybe if it was an election year, they'd pay attention.
Well, the process was a bit unusual because we had a combination of both very broad and philosophical topics and then some very specific topics. And it was kind of hard, I think, for them to kind of vote.
Yeah.
To prioritize such two dramatically different types of topics.
Yeah, I mean, I, I know, one of the things I had put up was citywide Wi-Fi. Because we kept talking about being a more innovative, open to development kind of city. And to me, that would be something that would put us on the map as being a little different. But anyway, I did not, I got one sticker, so.
And.
Yeah, one other, uh, I'm sorry, was there something else on that? Also, uh, we had a meeting on Friday that both Commissioner Teetz and Chair Rankin attended as well. Uh, autonomous shuttle, uh, technology from a company called Beep. I'll just kind of give my quick wrap-up. Uh, we're not ready for prime time for this technology yet. It's still very expensive and there's just a lot of hurdles on the, uh, technology. But it's worthwhile to keep tracking it and I guess some of us will try to do that.
And I thought it was great that guy came to talk. That was awesome. Um, you know, he presented it as if they're the leading number one, only real choice out there. I'm familiar with other options, so I think, I think it is a developing market and hopefully we will stay on the front end of that. But I do think we're still a couple of years away from anything being.
Yeah, and it's clear that their focus is really more private communities, private roads, very confined, controllable areas right now.
Places that can get big grants.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's true.
Twenty-three thousand dollars a month per shuttle bus. It's very expensive.
Yeah, yeah, so it's definitely.
Shuttle bus that still needs a driver or at least an attendant.
Well, right now, yeah.
Anything else? Anybody else got anything interesting? Nothing? No complaints?
Not this week.
I saw that part. All right, any interesting correspondence? I didn't see any, did we?
No.
Any kind of interesting director's report?
Um, the package includes, um, a memo from Paul and Shayna dated February 3rd. And it talks about three items. It's highlighting the North Washington Street, Columbia Street intersection work, which is a CIP project. There's no action required on that, but it was for information, an update. And then there was, um, uh, an outline of the main topics of the city council retreat that you just discussed. And then the Greenway Downs Overlay District, there's a council work session tonight in the other room. Um, and you also had, had work sessions on that on November 4th and December 16th. So it's, it's, it's now at council and, and they'll, they'll be discussing it tonight. So those are just some updates for you.
Excellent. Yes. All right. And that I think does it for our items for the meeting. And so now we're on to work session items. I don't see Cindy, did she send a scout?
She's in the room next door.
Should we flip?
Next door, Emomada is presenting to council their budget, so she said they're still on that item now. Um, can we maybe just refer to switch A and B?
Well, I was going to say if, if whoever needs to do B is available and ready, which is the, the South Gate 2 site plan. Are you guys prepared? I mean, we can also.
CIP.
Yeah, trust me, you don't want to see the CIP. But if they're not ready. Are we ahead of schedule? I feel, I feel bad that I'm running such an efficient meeting.
Keep it up.
We could go talk more about the advance. All right, so what we're going to cover is the 130 East Fairfax, uh, otherwise known as South Gate 2 site plan, correct?
Good evening. Um, so this is a site plan application for a new commercial development at 130 East Fairfax Street. The applicant is here tonight and will provide a presentation before, but before I turn it over to them, I'd like to just briefly summarize the staff report that's before you tonight. The property is located on the corner of East Fairfax Street and Douglas Avenue, um, two blocks from the Broad and Washington intersection and directly across from the Episcopal Church. Um, the site with land area of 0.88 acres is one of the two commercially zoned properties owned by the church along East Fairfax Street. Uh, the property currently serves a surface parking lot for the church. Fairfax One LLC is the applicant. They're proposing to redevelop the lot for a future commercial tenant under a land lease agreement with the church. This development would be known as South Gate 2 and includes a new 12,000 square feet of building with similar architectural design to the existing development on 116 East Jefferson Street, known as South Gate 1, which is the adjacent property to the west. Um, other surrounding uses include retail, single-family residential, townhomes, a church and a daycare facility. Staff reviewed the initial submission of the site plan and issued comments to the applicant on January 14th. In that letter, staff identified several areas of the site plan for further refinement between now and the action hearing, tentatively scheduled for March 2nd. Some of these items include, uh, building placement, architectural design, bike parking, intersection improvements at Fairfax and Douglas, and general site layout and pedestrian connections. The architectural advisory boards met on January 4th and offered several recommendations to the applicant. Their meeting minutes are provided in, uh, attachment to of the staff report. The applicant has since updated the, uh, their architecture and will include a new design in their next submission. The applicant is also seeking several waivers subject approval by the planning commission as part of the site plan application. And these include waiver to section 48938D to maintain an existing vehicular entrance exit to commercial or business off-street parking within 50 feet of an R district. The requirement is a minimum of 100 feet. Um, second waiver, uh, waiver to section 481181 to reduce the required perimeter parking lot landscaping density on East Fairfax Street and Douglas Avenue. Then waiver to section 481181 to reduce the required perimeter parking lot landscaping buffer to zero on the western property line and on the southern property line. Last one's a waiver to section 481183 to reduce the required buffer strip between zoning districts. That's between B3 and OD to zero on the southern property line from the required 20 feet. Tonight's work session is intended to inform the planning commission of the applicant's recent submission and to provide the commission an opportunity to offer feedback in advance of the public hearing. Following tonight's meeting, the applicant will submit an updated site plan that will, that will be presented to the planning commission for final consideration on March 2nd. That concludes my staff report. I'm happy to take any questions now or after the applicant's presentation.
Thank you. Do we have questions now or would we just wait?
I'm definitely interested in why the waivers, but I assume that will be part of the, yeah, presentation.
All right, then let's go for the presentation.
Oh, perfect. Um, good evening. I'm Jack Wilburn, the architect for the project and representing the applicant. Mostly because our engineer isn't here yet and Mr. Young is not here yet, so I'm just going to take it. This is still a work in progress. We've put on screen what we hope to resubmit, um, to address all, if not most, of the comments from staff. In this application, we are proposing, uh, bump outs at the intersection of Douglas and East Fairfax to reduce and add the distance for walking across the street as well as, uh, traffic calming. We're also putting a mid-block because that actually works out to go directly to where the stairs are, going up to the church, which is one of their main avenues to cross the street. A lot of the, um, wa, most of the waivers have to do with, for instance, down across the bottom where it says South Gate 2. There is an adjacent parking lot. Do I get to advance? Do I get to do that? I should be able to scroll. Okay, there you go. So the site's right here. There's a very extensive parking lot to this side. That's one of the waivers. Is essentially to waive, um, our remaining parking spaces which exist right now in that location. And what we're doing is adding, uh, plantings into the islands and up against the building as part of the bioretention system. One of the comments from both the AAB and staff was to try to create and enhance the pedestrian access to the building from the sidewalks, which we have ended up putting a continuous sidewalk all against the building and straightened out and took out a space here in order to have a straight shot, uh, including some bicycle parking, uh, external as well as the bicycle parking internal. I'll just run through, this was what we presented the AAB, which shows the existing South Gate 1 project with the proposed Phase 2 that we're proposing as part of the site plan, just the two different views. This was with all the existing landscaping that's on-site right now in East Fairfax. In working with the arborist, uh, she has designated most of those trees at, at their end of useful life, if not unsafe. So we're working with how to replant in that area with new trees, even though there are just massive amounts of easements for both power and data running through there that we're not quite sure that we can plant the same kind of trees that are there now. So we'll be working on that with the arborist. When we met with the AAB, we had this front elevation on East Fairfax. They made a fairly cogent argument that we needed to pull this building more in conformance with the existing building. If that was our goal is to create a unified, uh, front. So we took the more angled, bigger, bolder elements and incorporated that into the corner. The hyphen piece, much like what we've got at the other, uh, shopping center, uh, and changed and increased, uh, the glass along this elevation. The other elevations were, um, opened up and designed to, to match. We had the same angled feature piece. We have the use of applied, um, decorative elements, the awnings, uh, wrapping all three sides of the building that are readily. that are readily open to the public. Uh, the back elevation is the back elevation. Uh, what we're not showing are, uh, the raised planters that really wrap around three sides of the building, um, that will also help break that up a little bit. Let me just scroll to, oh, I'm going the wrong way. There you go. Now I understand the mouse. All right. This is the original application, the submitted site plan. You can see, uh, we had a more tenuous connection here. We hadn't done any of the road improvements, um, and the bioretention and egress from the building, uh, wasn't according to the fire marshal's wishes. So we have then put in the street improvements, straightened this out, um, created some sidewalks out of egress points inside the building to satisfy direct-to-the-public-way access for the fire marshal. Uh, stormwater management, in essence, there's an existing drain pipe that runs down and connects into the system. Since this is essentially a parking lot right now, uh, we're not increasing the impervious area, uh, very meaningfully, if at all. We're, however, disturbing, uh, some of the ground, so therefore putting in some of the, um, uh, BMPs systems for the raised bed planters and the more, uh, brighter green. We're capturing all the water off from the roof and putting it into those, um, bioretention systems, which will then pipe back to the original structure. So we're not changing direction or nature or the outfall. Uh, excuse me for trying to speak engineer speak. That's the summary of where we are. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, and I appreciate you guys jumping ahead without your whole team here. I know we kinda shuffled.
We're gonna make fun of Antoinette when she gets here.
Uh-huh. All right. Uh, anyone, who wants to start with questions? Russ Young?
Look, let's, uh, let's just go through the waivers. Um, the, uh, the, I, I understand the one at the south side with the existing parking lot, you addressed, addressed that one. But, uh, I didn't follow the other one.
So the first one is, uh?
Uh, the first one is the, uh, existing vehicular entrance and exit onto Douglas.
And that's just because across the street, there's existing residential and?
Correct. There's a one residence right here, and it's all commercial. So we, we actually worked very, uh, hard to, to try to pull it the full 50 feet. Um, and that's before we did the bump out for the intersection.
Is that additional curb, curb cut there?
No, it's existing.
It's hard to tell, couple of trees over there.
We're, if you, let's see. Uh, I had the very first.
There you go. Although it's right there, but under that tree.
Right underneath that tree. What we're doing is pushing it a little bit further away from that intersection.
Okay.
Next, uh, next waiver. Uh, between East Fairfax and Douglas Avenue. We have some of the same issues there because of the easements and the, uh, work that's there. We are proposing to plant that pretty heavily. I, I think it's just a matter of degree in how we can do trees or not do trees in those frontages. Uh, number three was the western and southern property line. And in essence, waiver four is a, a variation on three.
Yeah, the zoning's weird because that strip of parking behind is a different zone, and you guys are in a little B3 zone, I think.
Correct.
So the first waiver is essentially in effect for the existing parking lot because it's across the street from residential. But what's unclear to me is if the second waiver, i- i- if your project would have less landscaping than exists currently.
I'm going, I'm gonna say my, my civil's not here, so we'll, we'll get to the answer to that. Part of it is that there were existing trees there when we submitted. Our goal was to try to leave as much of the, uh, mature landscaping in place as possible, uh, and not disturb it and not fiddle with all the different easements. Since that application, the arborist was out there and has designated most of the trees on, um, not really suitable to maintain. Um, so we're gonna work that out with her. It may be that because we're gonna be replanting, that we'll come back in conformance. I, I can't speak to exactly how we're gonna do that. The goal is not to shortchange it in any way. The goal is to get, um, fairly heavy landscaping there, um, that is suitable for what we're planting. Uh, we got some contradictory comments from the AAB where they said, "Why don't you clear out all that planting so we can see the building more?" And I said, "I, I don't think we, I don't think we can do that." Um, but we did wanna, um, connect to the building, so we're doing that out at the perimeters more strongly than we did in the first.
And so this is a density thing more than, like, the actual width of the, there's currently a grass strip.
Correct.
And the width would be the same. It's just the density.
It's not a width. Do you remember if it's width? It's just density, I believe.
I think it's just density.
I have some questions. I mean, you're the architect, so we'll talk about buildings. I mean, the facade is all EFS?
Uh, no, actually, um, this is actually gonna use, um, metal sandwich panels for much of the exterior. The base will be, uh, a stucco directly onto a low knee wall. And then the accent pieces at the, um, corner are the same color, texture, and everything from the South Gate One, so we're pulling.
It's labeled as EFS on the, on the elevation.
On the original submission that we have.
I'm not looking at the original. I'm looking at.
Can I?
Yeah, I don't.
Sheet, P, zeros.
Kitty, you can, we only have the original submission in our packet, right?
Yeah.
We just have the original submission in our packet.
So it's no longer EFS?
Um, you can see relatively clearly from this rendering the piece on the white, on the end, which is white, and the base across is the EFS. The rest is prefabricated.
I mean, is there need to use EFS at all? I mean, it's such.
This white part.
I just feel like EFS is such a, you know, especially in the heart of our downtown area. It gives it a very industrial look. Um, I know the other building is already there, and unfortunately, in my opinion, has that look, but, um, I, I, I don't know. I, I know you're trying to go for, I guess, something that mirrors what's already there on the other building. The, the other question I had is on the, the Douglas facade. Why is, it's, it's a complete blank wall. I know there'll be plantings there.
Doug, this is, the small elevation to upper left is the Douglas.
Okay, that's different from what I have in my.
Correct.
So that's new.
Right. We, I mean, we were reacting to both, uh, the AAB as well as internal design.
I'm surprised he took the AAB to tell you that, I mean, frankly. I mean, that should've been something that.
By the time we got there, we already had the windows and the awnings and.
It should've been there from the get-go, in my opinion, but I don't know how that would. That seems like just simple, but, um. And the other thing I had, as far as the design of the building, I mean, it's a small site. There's not a lot of room to do a lot of things, but, I mean, I know, you know, in the other, in the existing building, I think one of the more popular tenants in there is that Audacious Ale Works place. Um, but there's no room for any kind of outdoor seating here. You know, there, there's not a lot of room, you know. It's mostly, it's, it's, in some ways, very traditional, you know, surface parking in front of some retail spaces, very narrow sidewalk. I mean, how wide is that sidewalk in front of the retail spaces?
Uh, fi- five and a half feet, I believe, right in this section.
That's barely enough room to, for two people to pass, walking along it. I mean, it doesn't really, it's very suburban to me. It's a very suburban strip mall feel, and, which is unfortunate, you know, in the setting where we are, you know, what we're trying to do and encourage. I understand, you know, ultimately, it's a site plan project and, and, uh, most of this is, I mean, this is a buy-ride project ultimately, but, um, you know, I think it would be nice to see some, something that, you know, kinda speaks to, I think, the, the vision for the core of, of the city. Um, you know, I think, you know, this, and I, granted, we're not on Broad Street, you know, we're, we're backways and, and there is, you know, the character here is a little bit different than on Broad Street and on Washington directly, but still, you know, I think that anytime there's a chance for redevelopment, in this case, new development, um, to step away from something that's so suburban-looking, um, you know, would be my biggest overall design comment from a design aesthetic. And I think there are ways, as you know, there are ways to do that with architecture and, and good si- site planning. Um, to me, it just seems very, seems very, almost outmoded, you know, something that I might've seen in a plan 15, 20, 25 years ago. Um, so I don't know how much room there is to rethink things. I think maybe you're, you're far enough along and this is what you want to build, but, um, you know, I think that there's potential to do more. You have a blank slate, blank lot there. Um.
I, I, I will say that, number one, this is not a primary market like on Broad. It's not even secondary. It's pretty tertiary. So in some ways, we're competing with suburban market.
Well, you're, so you're going down to, uh, you're building down to the, I mean, that's, that's kinda the wrong way to look at it.
We also have particular tenants who are interested, who, who need a big, simple, uh, project to move into.
I know.
So it's not your standard, break it up and have a, a variety of tenants kind of space. So one of the things we were also constrained on.
Well, is there office above, right? What, what, it's two stories, right? So there's.
No, it's one story.
It's just one story?
Correct.
Oh, but it's taller than the other building, right? Did I see it?
It's about the same tall, uh, height as the taller parts of that building is.
What type of tenants are you looking at?
Scramble.
Okay. I'll, I'll let Bob talk to that.
Uh, I'm Bob Young, um, the developer. Um, one thing I'd like to start with is we have a lot of constraints that are put on us by the church itself.
Hmm.
Uh, example being where the building's actually located. We originally had it pulled up. They felt very, very strongly. So there were just certain red lines that we had to, um, not cross. With respect to the tenant, we have a tenant for the entire building,
Hmm.
uh, and it's called Go Scramble. Uh, they operate right now in Alexandria and will maintain that facility about the same size. Um, it's what I would call a high-end indoor children's playground with a lot of emphasis on, um. It's high-end. It'll have a cafe. It'll have an area for parents to work on their computers.
Right.
Bakery, um, sandwiches, cappuccinos, and things like that. Uh, they're very successful where they operate now.
Hmm.
And, again, we had to work through a lot of issues with the church and the church's vestry, and this was a tenant that they felt very comfortable with.
Well, I, I understand that, and that's a business decision, and, and we're not gonna, I guess, you know, that's, that's your prerogative. I mean, right now, this, they're scramble, they're located like off Van Dorn and Eisenhower in a more industrial area, and typically, that's where those indoor play places tend to go. They tend to go to industrial buildings, mostly a combination, I think, of rent and space, and they have the high ceilings and the floor plates. I, I guess, I don't know if I think of that as almost like a, it's like a commercial recreation use. Not that it doesn't belong in the city, but it's, I, I don't know if it's the best use for the property ideally, but I suppose, you know, it is what it is, I guess. But, um, and then, and what if they leave, you know, I mean?
Mr. Krasner?
Yeah.
Let me suggest you talk to some of the young mothers in the city.
My, my wife is a young mother in the city, so I'm, I'm well aware. Well aware.
We had cheers when this was presented to the congregation.
I can't speak to the congregation, but I'm very familiar with mothers and children in the city. I have two of my own. But, uh, and, and like I said, I'm not saying it wouldn't, people won't patronize it. I'm not saying it won't be financially successful. I don't know. It, it very well could be. But I'm saying from a design, from a design perspective, from a planning perspective, is that, is, I almost view it as a, again, a use that typically locates in industrial areas, tip in Northern Virginia, the ones I'm familiar with. I know we do have the other one in your other bill, is it, I think it's your building, uh, that has the indoor, the, the jumping Joey's, and it does well. And so I'm not saying there's no place for it here, and it shouldn't be here, but, um, I don't know. I don't know what can be done, you know, again, from a design perspective to have it fit in better, you know? And if that tenant goes out, how much translatable does that building have for future tenants? Um, so, again, these are, these are my, my opinion. Um, but I, 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 I look at it as a building that is, again, not gonna add a whole lot, um, to that part of town.
Well, may I suggest that having a building there at all instead of a filthy parking lot that has no stormwater management at all, is probably a step in the right direction.
Oh, yeah, I'm building, I mean, building is better, I suppose, than, than nothing.
We're putting this building back, or putting this property back on the tax rolls. It's off now.
Sure. Sure. Something can be better than nothing. But there's good and there's, you know, best. So that's just my opinion. Take it for what it's worth.
Okay.
Other questions? Ms. Weiss?
Um, I conducted a site visit this weekend while procuring a brookie cookie. Um, and, um, as a semi-young mother, I would say, uh, this sounds like, uh, a great opportunity as a, as a business. I'm just looking at the streetscape standard, um, that we approved a couple of years ago, and the street was not designated as a connecting street, which might've been something of a mess because it's starting to act like a connecting street with some of the, you know, Audacious Ale Works and, um, Bake Shop. Um, so I'm just, I, I don't understand the decision not to pull the building closer to the sidewalk and to think about building, uh, more like a 16-foot streetscape with some of the plans that were included in the streetscape standards. Um, just thinking about, you know, neighbors who might wanna walk there or as a person who might drive there, um, I don't see the difference between parking in the back and going inside versus, you know, having to park in the front. So just a comment that, just thinking about the streetscape standards and wanting to build a more pedestrian-friendly street, and given how close that street is to what we've called connector streets elsewhere, pulling it forward seems like it might make sense.
Couple of, again, we, we have multiple constraints on the site, some which are the, the ownership giving us direction. Some of it is that area is remarkably dense with underground utilities um, that are not movable, so it, it, it wouldn't be just a, a simple flip. Um, we're also feeling like having the entrance, if, if I push it that way and all the parking is in the rear, um, I have a basic disconnect from, from this use. We, we don't have that relationship to getting our, the clients into the building, whereas if we have the parking in front, they can see where they're going. They get in their car and they, uh, get in their space and come in. The, um, the other aspect of this is if we push it all the way forward, we lose some of the interconnection between the parcels because now all of a sudden, people are going to be trying to circulate back through, uh, the street itself rather than coming around, um, and seeing whether there's space and then moving back to the, the rest. Um, we looked at multiple ways of trying to push this forward, flipping the spaces closer to the building, for instance. That brought us into greater non-conformance with the drive onto Douglas. Um, so we, we looked at multiple configurations. Um, we had the constraint, the physical constraints of the drive, the utilities, the existing trees, which may not survive, um, as well as the underlying ownership telling us where they wanted to have that work. We also feel pretty strongly that in this location, when you come across onto Fairfax, um, being able to see that there's parking available right in front is, is the teaser parking, uh, in a tertiary location is, is pretty important. If we're on West Broad, we're on a major urban thoroughfare, we're on a connector street, it's a different kind of, uh, game. Um, but this is, this is not that kind of location, um, and we just can't do that. It's a short story.
Anything else from Ms. Weiss? No?
So who's current, is, is the church currently using this as a parking lot? Is that the only use of it?
Yes.
So how are they going to re, I guess, I, I wonder where they're gonna repark these people?
What we've worked out with, with them is, um, they have exclusive use of the parking lot during, uh, Sunday mornings from 8:30 to 12, 12:30. Um, part of our lease says that Scramble will not be open during those hours, but will be open only for members of the church. They'll be able to bring their kids there free of charge during those hours. That was part of the agreement with the church. So they will, by putting the building there, there will be a loss of, I can't remember, 20 some odd parking places. We're going to open the shopping center, um, during Sunday morning for the churchgoers to park there. And Doris Newcomb, who owns the shopping center in the rear, has agreed that they can park in the back of her church, of her property. So the net is a gain of around 20 or 30 spaces over what they have now.
Mr. Stevens?
Yeah, this is a little out of the lane as far as a question, but I'm just curious whether you are seeking any environmental certification for the building?
No, we're not, but we are putting solar panels on the roof, uh, which we believe will cover somewhere around 25 to 30% of the electricity use. And of course, uh, our civil has just arrived, and she can talk more about the stormwater management. I want to emphasize that right now, there is none on this site. It's a parking lot. It's pretty dirty, and drains off a lot of silt and phosphorus and nitrogen and so on. Do, uh, Antoinette, I'll, Antoinette?
Isherwood.
Isherwood, Isherwood.
Hi, sorry, Antoinette Isherwood.
Hi, sorry, Antoinette Isherwood, Walter Phillips, and I apologize for coming late. I thought it was going to be later on the agenda.
Yeah, we, we changed the agenda on you, so it's not your fault.
But, um, I, the whole presentation, go through, okay. So I'll just go back to the stormwater management sheet that we have here. So we are treating the entire roof of the building and these planters that are shown around the sides. And treating the entire roof area actually exceeds our BNP requirements. So that is, um, since we have the ability to have the planters, we're doing that, and it also helps with the runoff, so the planters provide some runoff reduction. And all of these planters are going to tie into an underdrain that will outfall to a structure here that will control the volume of runoff from the site.
All right.
Question on that. I was just looking through those sheets. So you're not detaining the entire parking lot, though? You're only detaining a portion of it, right? You're detaining the building, and then you're detaining an area that's just a portion of the lot, correct?
Correct, and so, um, we're, we've done all our calculations based on the limits of disturbance.
Right.
And so there are gonna be some, based on the existing contours out there, like these parking spaces that we're not touching will flow towards this inlet that will go through the detention structure as well.
Right, but detention's only sized for the area you're disturbing, right? You're not detaining the, the area of the entire lot. Because, yeah, I know legally, you don't have to because you're not disturbing it, but-
Correct, the entire.
It's a pre-existing condition, but I guess, was there any thought paid to perhaps, again, we're talking a lot about stormwater management, um, in the city and, and looking to detain the entire impervious surface area of the, of the property? Was there any thought paid to that?
Yeah, well, I think some of it, too, is that, um, these part, we're just trying to limit our disturbance in general. And so some of it to capture, like, the, these parking spaces in this portion of the site is within our property limits and, like, this drive aisle is within our property limits, but we'd have to install infrastructure then to tie that, to collect it and tie it into the detention. And so it's also trying to limit what we're disturbing to install additional infrastructure for that.
Right, no, I understand that, but it'd be great to, you know, every time we have these older sites that are paved over to be able to fully detain it to modern standards would be ideal. I know, I understand it's, you know, there's, there's, there's a push and pull there, but... And, and, and for detention, it's just the actual pipe itself, right? I mean, you're using the actual pipe itself?
Correct, there's a pipe, and then, there are pipes, and then a control structure.
And it outfalls into where? It's outfalling into-
It goes out in this direction.
To the shopping center to the south?
To the, yes. So it goes through the west and then goes to the south.
Okay, and there's nothing on that lot, right? That shopping center is from predates then, so, okay.
And the planters do help with some of that runoff reduction as well. So while there isn't, um, large detention, the planters have a full section of gravel and soil media and vegetation that will help with some of that, bef- for, for the roof treatment.
All right, any other questions over here?
Just, can you talk about the, help me understand the calculation for the parking spaces? Is this the code? Is this how, how well parked is it in? Would you look for a parking reduction?
We are not looking for a parking reduction. We're parking, um, for, under the shopping center rate between the two spaces, which is the one per 300. And so the combined retail spaces for both of these buildings, um, let me go back to the aerial. So it is, it's for the existing center here, just these two lots. And so we're parking at the shopping center rate, and we're not requesting any parking reduction.
Any questions, Mr. Wadiska?
So I, I just wanna get clarification on the landscaping piece. Is, is there a, are we meeting the code on the landscaping? And there's been discussion about the existing trees, and they're mature, and they're not gonna, may not survive, or they have maybe come to the end of their useful life. But overall, this meets the code in terms of the-
Yeah, so we are, um, so this area along East Fairfax Street is a portion where the urban forester has asked us to remove the existing trees out there. So in replacing them, we were proposing to meet the requirements for perimeter parking lot landscaping. Over along this side, um, we are keeping the existing vegetation on Douglas. So on that side, we are requesting a waiver for a portion of the perimeter parking lot landscaping for the density. And then there's also requirements for perimeter parking lot landscaping on the west and the south, but obviously, they abut the drive aisles, um, and this building here, since the property lines go to the edge. And so we're not meeting the landscape requirements just because there isn't land for that. Like, I guess it's different than when you have a side yard to do it in. So we're requesting for the waivers for those. And there's also a waiver request for the buffer area between different zones, um, for the perimeter parking lot landscaping because our property line is right behind these spaces, and this is a drive aisle that abuts it. We're not, we don't have that, uh, landscape there.
Yeah, my, my concern is not on-
Okay.
The, 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 the ones that are part of the parking lot, basically, but the overall amount of landscaped area, it sounds like is not, does not meet the code because of those.
We are meeting our interior parking lot landscaping. I know we typically request a waiver for that.
The interior?
Yes, so there's the perimeter parking lot landscaping requirement and the interior parking lot landscaping requirement. So the interior parking lot landscaping are the landscaping in the islands between the parking spaces. So that one, we are meeting the requirement. It's, essentially ends up just being the perimeter parking lot along Douglas that we'll need to request. Originally, we had requested one on East Fairfax because we were trying to keep the existing vegetation.
Uh, so what percent are we landscaping of this property? And what does the code require in terms of that percentage?
The interior parking lot landscaping's a percentage. That one's a 5% requirement, and we're providing nine. And then the perimeter parking lot is more, um, like a seri- a number of plants per linear feet, a number of trees and shrubs per linear feet, rather than a percentage.
Uh, how am I, uh, I'm trying to get a number to make a comparison. So, uh, there's some requirement, and we are asking for some reduction, and how would I compare those two numbers?
Yes.
I just wanna point out, what we're talking about is that East Fairfax will be 100% in conformance because we're gonna replant everything.
Yeah.
The only section that we're not in compliance with right now is this little section along Douglas because of the existing planting.
Yeah.
In terms of quantification, that's maybe 20 lineal feet.
So I'm, I'm understa- I'm understanding it a little differently. Like, I, I, that, that's, that's clear to me, that's existing, but it, but you're also not meeting it on whatever we're, I forget, the directions are on the-
South Douglas, south on Douglas.
Yeah, you're not meeting on the south or the west. So I get that there's existing, and that's not, I have no problem with that. I don't wanna tear up additional land for that sake. But we're not, because the way that this lot is connected to these other malls, there's some reduction, I think, that's happening here, and I'm just trying to get a sense of it holistically.
So are you trying to quantify what the waiver count of plants would be?
Yes, you're not putting, you're not putting plants where your cur- where your, the hand is, right? And you're not gonna do it on the west side either.
Got it.
So there's some reduction, um, and I'm trying to get a handle on that.
Sure, so I guess there's no-
It's not being made up anywhere else is what I'm-
Right, and there's no, like, landscape overall site percent requirement. So I think it's difficult to say because if the bill, like, if you had a building that was built out to the property lines, there'd be no landscaping requirement. It's only like a perimeter parking lot landscaping requirement that we're not meeting because there are parking spaces there. And so there's no overall percentage for the site that we're not meeting. If it was developed, like, if it was developed with a building, you'd probably have even less landscaping, I guess, because you wouldn't have the parking lot, and then you wouldn't be required to do landscaping. So I, I think there isn't like an exact percentage of the site that we're not providing landscaping since we're requesting these waivers. There is no, like, 20% landscaped open space requirement or anything like that.
Okay, I mean, 'cause I'm, I, you know, you, the comment is, well, it's because it's a parking lot. To me, I sort of view it as, this is just a, you know, a green field that happens to have asphalt on it. You know, this is a new site, there's nothing that existing there. There's nothing restricting anything other than some traffic flow, which that part I get. Um, I don't view it as, these are, currently, I'm not viewing it, these are, are, are reasons because it's an existing parking lot. It, it just happens to be the current use right now.
Well, I guess, if, so like, because our, um, property line is right behind these parking spaces, we can't add a 10-foot parking buffer from our property line-
No, of course, of course, but, but you could make it up elsewhere. That's right, I, I'm, I'm not saying do something that doesn't make sense for the cars and the flow of traffic.
But, yeah, but I guess my point is, so if we, let's say we were to propose a 10-foot landscape strip here, these parking spaces wouldn't be able to be here, in which case, we wouldn't have that 10-foot requirement. So you're not-
Paradox.
Yeah, so you, like, wouldn't get that landscape, any, think of that?
I think what Russ is saying is you could put more landscaping on the side somewhere, which doesn't seem to be room for it, but, um-
Well, under the current 12,000-foot building.
Building, right.
That's, you know, under those limitations, there's not.
Yes.
But that's a choice, not a-
Right.
Not a requirement.
And I think what you're, you're looking at each side as its own independent entity. So the fact that there's no landscaping on the south side doesn't seem, you know, doesn't seem to mean, oh, we should have more landscaping somewhere else because the point of it is as a buffer between two sites. So having more buffer over here and none over here i- isn't necessarily-
Right.
A, a, a logical conversation. My question is, if you, if you wanted to make the little bit of Douglas Street conforming, would it mean ripping out what's there and planting two trees instead of one? Like, is it a space issue or a-
And I guess to clarify, it is only required here because there's no parking along this building.
And so that is just whatever normal property line buffer?
Right, it's just like streetscape.
Right. And so is that, is the problem in that little s- thing that you need more plants than exist there? Like, is it currently not conforming if it were looked at as its own little s- piece?
Correct, and, yeah, so that we're trying to keep existing vegetation, and there are a lot of underground just utilities in this area, yeah.
Yeah. Okay. I didn't mean to halt your inquisition, Russ.
Yeah, no, and, and I understand, I guess, what you're asking. I think it's just that it's difficult to quantify what that requirement would be because if we added landscaping here and couldn't have our parking, you wouldn't be required to provide that landscaping. So it could be like all building, like, if we had our building out to here to the property line, then you wouldn't have any landscaping either, I think.
Yes, and no parking.
Right.
All right, anything else, Russ? I got, I have a couple of questions.
Go for it.
Um, before it came up that, it was implied that, uh, the curb cut onto Douglas currently exists. I, I was looking at street view, I don't think, I think the only current access to that parking lot is via right down off of Douglas into the back-
There's one here.
Right, but there's not one up there.
This one is new, correct.
It's a new curb cut. And I guess what I'm wondering is, is that what is requiring the first waiver? Or even just the existing curb cut down, down lower would require that waiver about 50 feet of a residential, whatever it is?
It's a com- yeah, sorry, so it is a combination of this area and that area.
I guess my question is, if you didn't have a curb cut up there, would you still need the waiver? Or is just that curb cut triggering the need for the waiver?
Uh, that is a good question. I don't know off the top of my head. I'd have to look at what's there.
I think it's, it's distance from residential, the whole side of it's across from residential.
Yeah, it says to maintain existing vision.
You're talking about the perimeter parking lot landscaping?
I was saying the fir- the, the waiver to maintain-
Oh, sorry, the entrance, yes. The whole across the street's residential, so this one also needs that requirement because all of these are residential.
Yeah, I just wanna clarify, that's, that is a new curb cut up there on Douglas near East Fairfax.
Yes.
All right. Um, I wanted to confirm, I like the idea of that mid-block crossing, but I don't know, does, I assume the city staff is cool with that? There's nothing, seems logical, people are gonna cross there regardless, so.
So the, the first submission does not include that curb cut, so we do have to vet it with transportation planning and transportation engineering to make sure-
Okay.
That's okay, but we did discuss it in a meeting.
Okay.
Should be able to get your comments in the next round.
All right, I like the idea, as long as it seems safe. I mean, people are gonna cross there anyway, so hopefully that will be the conclusion.
And, sorry, just, and to interject, one of the, um, items we're also proposing with that mid-block crossing are the bump outs to help with the traffic calming as you go down East Fairfax, to help with the crossings as well, so.
Right, and which, you know, the staff, in the staff report, one of the things they talked about was pedestrian connections, and you addressed some of that, but they did ask, one thing that seems reasonable, which is a better connection between the two properties. I don't know that that has been added or how that would be added. And then they seem to also ask what seems to be probably unreasonable, which is a sidewalk in front of the existing 116 East Fairfax, along East Fairfax. That seems impossible without wiping out a, a bunch of parking. But I just wanted to say, like, I assume you guys saw that. I assume staff realized that was probably a long shot request. But what about a connection from the two properties? Like, if I was at the new building and I wanted to go over to the old property, is it just kinda scoot across that driveline, no big deal?
Yeah, I think we're continuing to explore opportunities to make that connection.
Yeah.
Um, it is a little difficult just because of the configuration of the two sites are different with the existing building over here and the way the parking dimensions are, um, and kinda where this entrance ends up being. So we are trying to work to improve pedestrian connections elsewhere, um, but we are continuing to look and see if there's anything we can-
And out of curiosity, someone parking at this site, will they be permitted to walk over to the other side? Or will they get towed? No, none of that?
We don't tow.
Okay, all right, good. Um, and then, my final, did you have something, Brett?
No, that was my question.
Yeah, I mean, my fin- my final comment is just like, I think everyone, including Bob, would like to have the building closer. Uh, I understand your arguments about the re, you know, the nature of someone driving by. I think that's probably whatever, but it sounds like the church doesn't want it. It sounds like there's physical problems underground that would make that difficult. Um, which is unfortunate because, you know, having the two buildings kinda line up would be pretty cool, but we can see the parking in front of the existing building is kind of a mess just because it's not really enough room for two rows of parking, and so you kinda cram in there. So, you know, I think overall, as a buy-right thing, um, seems pretty good. I mean, definitely better than a dirty parking lot.
I think our standard should be higher than that.
Yeah, this is buy-right, so there's only just someone, yeah, I'd love you to build something fancier by right. That'd be great, um, but I've seen much worse buy-right developments, so, um...
Setting the bar pretty low here.
You should go buy it and build something by right, man.
No, I'm saying, you're saying we've seen better, you know, but-
No, I'm just saying, when, when someone comes with a buy-
It's been worse, and that shouldn't be our standard.
Well, I think when someone comes up with a buy-right development, there's only just so much we can do. I think when we give them unrealistic suggestions, it's, it's not necessarily beneficial. So I think some of the stuff we've talked about in terms of improving the landscaping, seems like you've already made some improvements based on staff feedback. I think that's good. Seems like you have a little bit more work to do. But I don't see, uh, logically, much that would necessarily need change. So that's my opinion. Any other questions? I mean, we're just giving you guys feedback. You'll be back later for other stuff. All right, thanks, sorry for switching up the agenda on you. I blame, I blame Womata. Yeah, exactly. All right, we're done with that. Now we're back to number 8A, CIP, Future Projects, the thing you've all been waiting for, Anna Security Alert. Oh, pleasing Microsoft sound. Ready?
Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to formally present to you this evening the FY 21 to 26 CIP. Pleasure to be back from the two weeks ago meeting when we did an update on where we were on current- meeting when we did an update on where we were on current CIP projects. So this will be the look ahead for the next formal six years, plus some of the 10-year long-term planning. As we start the presentation, I do want to acknowledge that I'm joined with several of the staff that are involved in the CIP development effort with me. Not all, because we would probably fill up the whole chambers with the amount of people it takes to pull the CIP together. But we do have the CIP manager. Ollie is with us. We have our CFO, Karen, is with us. Our stormwater engineer is here, but I think he went to chat with the developer that was, oh, you moved on me. Mic's back there. And we, of course, have our school board partners with COO and facilities manager. So tonight, I want to go through the presentation. It'll be at a high level within, hopefully, the 20-minute ask that you had, and touching base on some of the items that you specifically called out. We were able this year to give you the CIP notebook in advance, hard copy today, electronic last week. And you do have a staff report that also provides a proposed motion for your consideration on February 18th, which is the requested date to update, adopt the recommendations. Tonight, I'd like to cover some of the overview documents, which includes some new items requested by the Planning Commission. We'll focus on some of the projects, as well as the financial status and policy compliance, funding sources, and then close with the schedule, and then any direction and questions from the Commissioners. The CIP before you continues with the focus on goals that we had last year for reinvesting in our community infrastructure, utilities, transportation, and facilities being of the core focus, prioritizing needs over a six-year plan, as I mentioned, with still the 10-year-long view. And we are working really hard to align project delivery to both staff resources and funding, and we've made major strides in that, especially in the regards to transportation this year. The CIP is consistent with the comp plan, and this is just a fun word cloud pulling out some of the language from the CIP that's before you. More formally, it is compliant with the comprehensive plan. I've outlined the chapters, of course, that you're very familiar with, that have been recently adopted, that we speak to, as well as the area plans, and the 2018 financial policies. And as a side note, the 2019 budget guidance from council, where they specifically talked about maintaining funding for infrastructure on capital and sidewalks in particular. This is the biennial budget cycle reminder. As Mr. Wadiska was asking on the 21st, this is the odd year, because it is, while it's 2020 this year, and even the CIP is for 2021, so it's the odd year. So it's for minor updates, and we have focused very much on existing projects for that alignment of resources. There is a new sidewalk for sidewalk, a new project for sidewalks and streetlights, which I'll highlight more fully in a little bit. There are some new CIP resources in your notebook and the electronic versions, and the first two are direct results from the Planning Commission's ask. And so I would call your attention to tab one in the notebook for the comprehensive plan report card, as we're calling it. It's towards the end of tab one. And you'll see the four new chapters outlined with the action strategies, both policy and projects, as it relates to CIP. So it's not everything in those chapters. But, for example, if you look at mobility for all modes, which are blue and color-coded, it'll follow page 1-14. You'll see where we are on action steps related to the policy, and then specific projects. And we went back and caught up with a lot of the past projects, so there's previous things to the current status. So it captures it as a report card, and we welcome feedback in this format, and then we'll target using it for every CIP update going forward. It does help to really connect the comp plan and the area plans and the master plans to the CIP, and gives you a one-stop shop to look at the successes. So it's a very important roadmap. Directly following the report card, you will see the action report. And this was also a Planning Commission request to talk, highlight in one place what had changed from last CIP to this year, because there are changes in terms of funding, additional projects, deletion of projects. And so we've called that out. There is one that's just on transportation, and that took two pages because of the complexities of that component of the CIP, and then also one for utilities and general government. And so, after the presentation for any of these new items, if you have specific comments or suggestions for improvements, we welcome that feedback. Also on tab eight, we have refined the transportation schedule. So you have seen that previously, but what you have now is sort of a more granular color coatings. You can see where we're applying for grants, design, engineering, and construction. It helps us estimate the workload by fiscal year, acknowledging that many of those milestones will cover more than one fiscal year. And it was another tool that we used internally for aligning staff and funding resources. Also want to call your attention and remind the community, the public, that we do have the CIP interactive map on the website, where you can check the status of all projects, the funding source, and the project manager assigned to that. That's updated quarterly when we do the CIP snapshot, which was the document, for example, that was in your January 21st presentation packet. Brand-new, literally on the website as of today, as we were working it concurrent with the CIP as a neighborhood traffic calming map. And this is a result of our coordination team that we're now doing that's focusing on NTC, and responsive also to a council ask to be able to be more transparent as to where we are on projects. Many of them are smaller projects, and so what we've done is create a standalone map, not just embedded in the large CIP map, where you can go on and look at green for completed, red, active, and then blue, which is a fair amount, are in the pending, because a petition's been submitted, or we're waiting to implement the federal grant that I spoke to last meeting, that we have awarded, or the FY '20 budget amendment that's pending for additional NTC resources. So two new resources to add to the report card and the action report. Some of the key highlights that we'll highlight this evening are around the new projects, and that would be the sidewalk and streetscapes. Also, our long-term look out into the 10-year for transportation projects to implement your adopted POA. Some specific project funding. We do have neighborhood traffic calming for the first time in the CIP for $100,000 every year. Ideally, it could be more for the demand, but balancing all of the needs. We now have dedicated funding. That's local funding, so it's much easier to administer than federal or debt finance sources. We'll also talk about stormwater and sanitary sewer. Those, of course, are really important and really critical to the community now, after some recent flooding and the stand-up of the task force. And traffic and signal costs, we'll talk about those, but those costs have been escalating. So in the CIP, we were able to right-size the project costs going forward. One of the things that remains unfunded is school facilities for the reinvestment outside of the big capital projects. And so I'll have a slide on that to talk a little bit more, but this is a synopsis of that status. And of course, Womata, besides the orange line shutdown discussion that we just had with council, the pressure on the budget is still increasing, and the net increase to the local tax dollars is $550,000. It was almost $800,000, but we are using NVTA, 30% regional money to cover part of that, and also debt service in the out-years. So those are some real key issues highlighted that are in the CIP before you this evening. Looking at the big picture, this sheet, of course, is hard to read on a screen, but it is 3-1 in your notebook, and this will give you all of the components of the CIP in one-shot summary. And bottom line, when you combine all six years totals for general fund, transportation, and the utilities, the CIP is 1.112 million. Now, two years ago, when the high school was in there, it would have been even larger, but that one's already appropriated. So 112 million before you, it's still a robust CIP for reinvesting in our community. I do want to start with utilities this evening. That's tab 10, if you want to follow along with any of the specific project sheets. Starting with sanitary sewer, we, of course, made progress on the re-lining. That's been a commitment every year towards that, which does help with INI. We're about 44% done, 21 miles out of the 49. So clearly still miles to go, and you do have CIP proposed funding before you to continue to reinvest in that. There is 7.65 million to continue that sewer re-lining, the rehab. There is also an additional almost 6 million for treatment plant improvements. This is consistent with what's been in the CIP before, working with the two treatment plants where our sewage travels to. And then also 18 million for capacity expansion for new development. So this is work that our new engineers for stormwater and sanitary sewer are really getting a handle on, to understand what our capacity is, when do we need to time and bring it on. And so you'll see a much larger project cost before you in the CIP for those items. And then we are looking at sewer availability fees that can help offset the expansion, both for the treatment plants and capacity, but in reality, they are insufficient. So to meet all of the needs of sanitary sewer, we are currently doing a rate study, and that information will not be complete by the time you adopt. And so it'll be a concurrent pattern as we finish out the operating budget for the city manager and council's action. But the bottom line, to do all that's needed, the current rate structure cannot support the debt that's required. As it relates to stormwater, this is the map that was provided to council and the stormwater task force that kind of showed where we've been. And there was a small snippet in your presentation last week, so this is a little fuller for the screen. It is available under tab 10 in at least a larger size for you to see. So we made quite a bit of headway. We have RIN's branch that is being completed this year, but obviously, that doesn't meet the needs. And as you all know, the council has stood up the stormwater task force. They've had two meetings, and their target is to update the watershed management plan. They are looking at six to eight projects, looking at design costs and prioritization structure, and that will update the watershed management plan. Their work will not be done by the time the Planning Commission is asked to adopt a recommendation. So what you have before you in the CIP is the preliminary engineering cost estimates with our staff's professional recommendation at a high conservative level, with significant contingency in there, while the work of the task force continues to unfold. The CIP before you talks about the six to eight projects, not in specific locations and not in priority order, because we don't want to supersede the work of the task force. But it does outline for you our recommended amount of financial commitment that it's going to take to address those six to eight projects, as well as being able to go past six years and continue to address the infrastructure needs. So right now, that amount is about 14 million in the estimate project before you. And concurrent with the sanitary sewer rate study, we are also doing a rate study for the stormwater fee. It also cannot currently support that level of debt in its current structure. To give you some context for that, staff have done some estimating with our current residential stormwater fees, and for every million-dollar of project that we need to fund, it would be about $20 per year per homeowner. In the 10-year out window, the four-mile run project still exists. That would be a future grant. Right now, the priority is on the other projects to execute those. This is the milestone chart that's been presented to the task force. I included it in here so that you can see. They've had two meetings. We're presenting the CIP to you this evening, and you are scheduled to adopt on the 18th the recommendation. And you can see what the continued work will be with the task force, the rate study, and a recommendation if we need to amend the watershed management plan, and also the ordinance for the rates. So that'll just give you a timeline for how the task force work is overlapping partially with the Planning Commission's actions, but not fully. The goal would be to realign it by the time council adopts the budget. For the utilities, you also have a summary for each project by fiscal year, totaling for the six-year window and the 10-year. And so that's available in tab 10, page 3-6. Moving on to general and school funds, we also have tab three, the summary chart, as I just showed for the utilities. We're looking at about 19 million now in this area. Notice that it doesn't have transportation, and that is, of course, much smaller because of the high school. CIP has already been funded, so it is not in this planning horizon. In this fund, going a little deeper, we'll start with parks and fields. What's before you has been recommended by the Rexon Park Advisory Board. There is continuation of the Fellow's parkland, which was in their last time to be able to implement the master plan, once the community engagement work is done, looking at design, engineering, and then construction. Practice Light Fields is in here again for actually being funded this year. It is actually one of the few times where the cost estimate has come down from what we had last year. So a total of, for the project, going from $400,000 to $300,000. That impacts the general fund side by $50,000. It's a 50-50 partnership with the schools, so the general government side's $150,000. And the George Mason High School construction contract includes the school's portion. Continuing to fund Park Master Plan, and I will call your attention, last year, there was a turf field replacement project, and then planning for out-years for needing to recycle them from their life cycle of nine years. That, when we really looked at what was included and what can be financed under governmental accounting, it is not a capital project. So it's been moved as a recommendation to the operating budget. And so that will, either way, it was going to be hard to fund, so it is just which, which side of the ledger now has the challenge for committing to that open space?
So, just, so a new field is a capital, but replacing an existing field is not?
Yes. So it's similar to how we look at roads, for example, and pavement. If we're doing a roadbed reconstruction, and we're going all the way down to the base, and we're more than four inches deep, CIP. If we're just resurfacing it and striping it, it's in the operating budget. Same for the turf. So when we did Larry Graves, brand-new, all the way down to the base and up, but when you go to replace the grass and the pellets, operating. Open space is in the CIP, because that's one that we wanted to keep a good focus on. It has increased from $1 million to a $3 million ask, because none of the acquisitions recently would you get any parkland or property at $1 million. So the Rexon Park Board has proposed to incrementally grow it. It remains unfunded in the CIP as it has for the last, well, hour long I've been doing CIPs now, I guess, 10 years. But it's also not funded, because we can't dead-finance on a non-known specific project. So like when Fellow's property came up as an opportunity, it was a standalone amendment to the CIP that then we had a property, and the decision was to pull funding from the capital reserves for the 4.2 to fund it. On governmental facilities, we're continuing the reinvestment at $300,000 a year, as you saw last year. And for FY '22, the security systems for all our centralized monitoring remains the same, as you saw it last year. Fire station also remains the same this next year. This next year would be the 550,000 for the bay doors, all 10 doors to be replaced, including the heaters over the door. And then for the next two years, there'd be no funding because we sort of advanced that 150,000, and then they pick up. The project in particular will outline their other facility needs. And as of this last week, the HVAC Phase 2 has been completed at the fire station. At the, your advance, when you were looking at what questions you want to cover under the CIP, two areas that the planning director forwarded to me were City Hall and Library on the 21st. I couldn't provide much detail. I can probably provide a little bit more. In terms of City Hall, the final construction items and commissioning are undergoing as we speak. In fact, HIT was on-site this past weekend. We're finalizing contract cost negotiations. That remains confidential, so I can't speak to any dollar amounts this evening. We're excited, on the 27th, our police officers, the street patrol, moved back into City Hall, and so we have a fully functioning police station in City Hall again. And we are finishing some security items for courts, clerk of the court, and magistrate, some of which will be in this room and you'll have direct benefit of. But because that construction's not happening, we're looking at April for those functions to be back, at which time all former tenants will be back home, as it were, in City Hall. For the library expansion and renovation, as has been reported and was before council a last meeting, 100% construction permit documents are complete. The GMP has been negotiated. The expected award of that contract for construction to the CMAR Construction Manager at risk is February 10th before council. The budget amendment that council had first reading on at last week's meeting would increase 2.3 million for local funding to the library project above the 8.4 that Planning Commission had previously approved in the CIP, and would appropriate the 300,000 that is in Founders Rose VCs that were specifically targeted for library construction. And the city has actually already enreceded that funding. The second reading is scheduled for February 10th to align with contract award. Turning to schools' facilities, as I mentioned, for the facility reinvestment, most of that is showing as unfunded. The general government funding was the result of us consciously cutting money from the operating money and moving it over to the CIP. That was a hard effort, and with school cost enrollment, that would be very hard on a school budget, so it hasn't happened yet. But what we were able to do with the FY '20 funding is reduce the school board's request from 750,000 to 360,000 unfunded, because with the FY '20 budget amendment, that's also before council for the library, as well as neighborhood traffic calming, 390,000 has been allocated to the schools for capital use. And so that will be appropriated in the FY '20 budget. So we reduce what's before you in FY '21. That is a result of the revenue-sharing conceptional agreement between council and the school board. That project for reinvestment does leave 1.35 million unfunded for the full five years of the CIP after FY '21, including the partial FY '21, and would include things like flooring security and roof replacement for Mary Ellen Henderson, the stadium restrooms at the high school, and then off-site parking, because currently, the property yard is housing about half of the school bus fleet. And so with the completion of the high school and middle school, there will be additional parking location required, and the schools are currently investigating options. For TJ Elementary, this is a pretty significant change from what you all saw last year. It was perceived previously 11.6 million. Now, due to lining enrollment, they won't need to do that expansion within this 10-year window. It doesn't mean that it might not possibly be an issue as enrollments in Mount Daniel capacity cap become an issue in the future. But they've done a deep dive in projections and have done the expansion in an out-year and are targeting now 3.5 million in this CIP to cover core system enhancements from the original part of the building, windows, restrooms, kitchens, those core things, as well as ADA compliance. As it relates to transportation, which is tab 8, we continue to really go after grants and leverage our local money quite significantly, as you've seen before. So this is just a reminder of all the various funding sources, which you can also see on tab 3, because they're all listed out there, whether it's federal, state, or local. So when we look at just the funding sources on the six-year sheet, and this actually is 3-5 in the CIP, and this is actually, as Mr. Wadiscus asked maybe three years ago now, four years ago, where we would organize it by funding sources, I've just pulled out the transportation for here. You can see there's $38 million worth of grants in the six-year window, and so that's leveraging your local and debt money. If we include the Womata $4.5 million debt issuance that's required over these next six years to fund the current proposed Womata budget, we're hoping it comes down a little bit, that's a 1 to 2 ratio. Without Womata, just looking at our local infrastructure impact, it's a 1 to 4. So the grants are very valuable to the transportation delivery. For the 10-year planning horizon, we actually would grow the CIP from 56 million to 118 million. And that, as we'll see in a moment, is because of these out-year unfunded items. We felt it was really important for the long-range planning to put in some of the area plans that we're not addressing now, so that we can start planning for them from a workload, as well as grant applications. And of course, all of these documents are consistent with your comp plan, master plans, and POAs. And so you all know where to find them, but I did include this for the public, so they have the link to the planning library where all these documents are housed. Continuing on transportation, as I mentioned, we have worked hard to align the resources. So the revised delivery schedule that I mentioned under tab 1 is a great new resource for us. It allows us to continue our work of project managers working from cradle to grave, beginning to end on these projects. It is a cross-departmental effort. Our project managers come from both public works and planning, and of course, it also requires inclusion of public safety, city manager's office, and finance. The graphic that I inserted under bullet 3 is on the final page of the schedule, and it's the first time we've reintroduced sort of the workflow by fiscal year to kind of give a sense of all these projects and all the money. How many are we trying to manage on a fiscal year? So you'll see blue for grants, yellow for design, green when we get into engineering, which can still have some design, and then construction. All of these, of course, include procurement and grants, but there's a high grant piece up front. And so we're trying to really look at, right now it's still heavy because we're trying to deliver a lot of projects, but to space this out, but make sure we're always applying for grants and always planning, so we don't stop reinvesting in our infrastructure and then all of a sudden have a critical issue, or can't achieve our walkability pedestrian goals. So I do want to highlight that it is a duplicate count, because projects will start and carry over in multiple years. Design and construction could be multiple years. So this isn't a count of projects, but it is a sense of staff workload. In the CIP that's before you, we have new estimates for traffic signals and pavement. They basically doubled in cost estimating. Some of it is from early-on designs and not having contracts where we, and a cost estimator to really build the projects, and some of it is just the reality of costs. Whenever we do a V dot funded project and apply for a grant now, they're telling us to do a contingency of 40% if we're still in preliminary design stage. So in the CIP, we have basically doubled all of those. We've actually applied for additional grants that are in this round of funding with the Commonwealth Transportation Board, and that did require us to get really creative because we had to match those grants. Most of those were a 50-50 match. So in the CIP before you, we have rightsized cost estimates. We have worked to align the staffing, because some of that also meant we changed what year they were in because of the grant cycles did the match. So if you look at the report card to show what changed between '20 and '21, you can pick up some of that grant detail and timing. And as I mentioned earlier, Womata continues to be a key driver to the transportation project. It's totally critical to our region, is an important transit resource, but their budgeting and how they're managing it is challenging. I am monitoring the General Assembly. There are some very positive omnibus transportation bills out there that could provide additional money for Womata and our NVTA resources, as well as a separate bill that actually would increase the NVTA funding, which is really critical to our transportation. It's looking at different gas tax and under funding sources. So while not reflected in the CIP, because you can't guarantee what'll come out of the General Assembly, I am more optimistic than ever that we will see something, and hopefully that can make next year's CIP a little less pressure, at least on the transportation side. With that said, we are still continuing to invest in the infrastructure, and TC, as I mentioned, has an annual allocation every year, as does the new sidewalk, streetlights projects. So both have 100,000 each year, so in looking at those two local projects, which impact our residential a lot more, there's 200,000 per year. I do want to call out that there was a parking structure concept in the CIP where we might supplement the Kaiser parking garage or something similar. We had to remove that pending legal review on the ability of public dollars on a private property when we don't have an ownership portion. So while that's still under review, it's not in the CIP that's before you. And as I mentioned, we are looking in the 10-year horizon on transportation projects, particularly looking at North Washington, West Broad, and West Falls Church POAs. In total, grants we need to go for are ones that are potential. It's about 48 million. So that's why the CIP transportation goes from 56 million in FY, in the six-year window to 118, is because we're looking at this long-range planning. Specifically for the new project, this is a sidewalk-street concept. It has two components, so it's one project for 150,000 a year, but it continues throughout the whole 10-year horizon. And one component is to address the missing sidewalks, so we have a regular plan to do that. Staff is currently developing a missing links map, so we can really identify, prioritize, and update some data that we had from several years ago. And then we hope that that will allow us to have a staff-formulated recommendation, and then working with the CACT come up with a process so that we can prioritize and execute. It will take multiple years to address missing sidewalk segments, for sure. This, similar to synthetic turf or pavement, is not fixing a missing little sidewalk panel that's cracked or smoothing out the ADA. That would be operating maintenance. This is putting in those missing links where we have to do some full construction. The other component to this project, which is married together, because often your streetlights and your poles and sidewalks go together, would be to convert the streetlights to LEDs. So this would be picking up something from your, the draft environmental chapter that hopefully will soon be approved by council. So Dominion is already switching to LED lights, so if something breaks and they can't...
Question on that point. This may be off-topic, but on the lights, the LED lights that have been put in the city recently are ridiculously bright, like ridiculously bright. Like the one at Fulton and Pennsylvania, ridiculously bright. There's one on Highland, right at the edge of the city. It's in the city limits, just on the border with the county, but it's in the city, ridiculously bright. It's like a stadium at night. And it, obviously, when the other lights around it are older, it's even more distinct. But I certainly would not want to see all the lights in the city replaced with LEDs of that color and temperature. You know, they were based on temperature range. They are, I can't believe people haven't complained about it. Like, it's a bright, it lights up people's front yards and houses like a, again, like a nighttime ballgame. It's insane.
It is not off-target. That's a perfect segue to the rest of this project, so thank you for bringing it up. This is why we think it's important.
Let's not buy those lights.
Important to be a CIP project, because Dominion is currently going out there and replacing. They are selecting what goes back, their own light color and temperature, and they're going to match whatever's there. So if our parking light, we actually have three in the campus here, they're the Square Colonial lovely lights. They break, you're getting Dominion's choice, looks like that, and their choice of wattage and color.
Can we get them to replace the ones that are out there already? Because they're, I mean, I don't, I mean, I don't, it's not right in front of my house, but I can't believe those folks like that. You live on Fulton, right? I mean, you know what I'm talking about? It's unbelievable. It's like, talk about light pollution and like dark sky stuff. It's just unbelievable.
2,700 kil, Kelvin is the right measurement.
Do you know what I'm talking about, Tim? You know the light?
I know, because Arlington and Fairfax both went through that. They put them in about five years ago. A lot of their residents complained, and they had to go back and replace them. So we should kind of learn from that.
You can see them at where Ridge Place and Broad Street come together. Near 24 Fitness, and, because the lights, but they need to be super bright there because you couldn't cross at night. But if that was in my yard, I would be not gonna have...
I mean, on quiet residential streets, some lighting, basic lighting is okay, but I mean, that, what they've put in is just...
Those are good bright, though.
So just to clarify, right now, if a streetlight goes out, Dominion shows up, puts in a new streetlight, LED, whatever they want?
Correct. So if they can replace the ballast or the bulb, and they have that part, they'll do it. If they cannot, they're going to swap out that head, put LED in, and do it in-kind, so it'll look in-kind, so whatever's there is what you're going to get, ugly cobra, the colonial.
When you say "look," you mean not the light, but the housing of the light?
The housing fixture. And it'll be LED, and they will choose the wattage and the color, too.
And I'm just curious, what's their motivation for not choosing the wattage and color that we like?
Because we haven't told them yet. So we have, through our contract with Dominion, have done a lot of negotiation. Kate Walker was really helpful on that early on, and now Planning and Zach and Cameron, so we get Planning and Public Works, have put together, and if you turn to 8-15A, you will see some of the issues that you're identifying exactly. We need to do two things. One, we needed to tell Dominion now, when you go out and replace the light, this is what it's going to look like, based on the location, what the wattage is, and what the color tone is.
And how does this relate to CIP?
And it relates to CIP because we are proposing that instead of Dominion doing it one-off, which they will continue to do, so we need to tell them what we think they should do.
And do they bill us?
We would like to address the...
Let the light be dark.
Some lights bright, some lights dark, because there's going to be one light on a street and then nothing for a couple blocks. So we're proposing in this CIP that we replace all 1,100 lights that still need to be replaced, because there are some on Broad Street already. We had that CIP project, and some of the developers have put in LEDs per the street scape standards. But we have 1,100 lights that still need to be done. That's great streets, that's parks, and that is residential. They, that will cost us about 200,000 to 250,000. We're working on the cost estimates, because part of that is based on what lights we pick. And you'll get a four-year payback. Once we are fully converted, we will save almost $45,000 a year for electric light bills from Dominion on the general government side, let alone what we can do on the schools' property. So this would be targeted with the sidewalks, so we can prioritize, we want to do all the lights in the first two years, then do sidewalks, or we can do a blending and convert everything out. Then we're telling Dominion what we want, but we're also prioritizing which streets and how to do it, so you don't have a mismatch going down.
So it sounds like the streetlight in front of my house is out. I shouldn't report it until you get this sorted out?
Don't do it. Don't do it. Trust me.
Well, we're hoping that, one, we're going to do a staff field trip, because both Arlington and Fairfax County have places set up, so we can actually go see lights, we can see their color tones and the wattages. So then Zach Bradley, our engineer, can finalize those estimates. What you have on the screen here... What you have on the screen here and in the document on eight dash fifteen A, which welcome feedback today or at the next meeting, is what we're proposing at a staff level for lights, looking at streetscape standards, looking at LED lights, because you want stuff that is in the residential that doesn't widen out and hit people's houses. You wanted to get the sidewalks and streets. But if you're in a school property or a park or a parking lot coming out of 24-hour fitness, you want a really wide light so you have no shadows. So we're also working with the chief of police on this. So we're going to do the site visits so that we can finalize. But these lights that are before you on this document address the type of lights you need in the different locations in the streetscape. So you also will have a map as to sort of where all the lights are. Blue dots, which are a whole lot of blue dots, are Dominion lights, and they're going to change them when they break, whether we tell them what to put there or not. And we strongly feel like we need to tell them. They will gladly do it if they know. If it's at the basic price range, they will do it at no cost. If we pick premiums, then the added cost is to the city. The CIP project before you takes into account that we have selected most of them basic. That is because we negotiated really hard upfront to get ones that had acorns and matched our streetscape standards. So basic acorn would go for the parks. We do have that basic concept in Freddie Park already, for example, but here on this campus is the old Square Colonial look. The carliacorn would be residential and a backup to the Great Street approach if we need a basic option. The cutoff acorn is for Great Street, number one, and all of these have LED going down and not spread out as much. That one has a darker cap. And then also the shoebox, which is a nice, flat look that kind of disappears and is gray, would replace all the acorns that Dominion has on the poles. I mean, the Cobra, it's not the acorns. So that's sort of the look of the lights. You can see on the second page, the color-temperature scales that you were referring to, and that's where we really want to go do a site visit, because you would want potentially a different color in residential than on the Great Streets or in the parks. But it also is for public safety, so we want to make sure it's good for police officers to see in the dark and shadows and the maps. So that is the one project I wanted to go in more detail for exactly the points that Mr. Krasner was bringing up. So thank you for the great segue there. And certainly, staff seeks your input on the design. We will also be taking this to the ESC, AAB, and CACT. And wake up. And then to sort of close out into the financial piece, the CIP that before you, bottom line, is compliant with policies. And you can see here in this pie chart, just the general funds, so this is not utilities. Transportation remains the largest part of the pie, and that is a good thing because it means we're leveraging grants and reinvesting in the infrastructure. When you add the utilities, the utilities become a third of the pie. Transportation obviously adjusts to that, but it really does show a strong reinvestment into the community over the next 10 years. In this case, the pie is for the six-year window. For debt fund balance, the blue bars are the fund balance, and the red line is the 20% of expenditures, which is the one that changed a couple years ago as part of the high school. So it's not the old policy, it's the new for 20% of expenditure. So we're clearly well within policy, which is critically important to make sure that as the economic development at West End unfolds, we can still have sustainability if there's a downturn in the economy. For debt service, we also are within policy. You've got a 12% target, which is the blue, and the maximum up here at purple. We are not near the purple, even with bringing in the red new debt service. Then we start dropping off in the out-years. If people like the numbers, you could go into this chart in the CIP section for tab two, which is where your financials are, and do a deeper dive on numbers instead of graphics. And then as I wrap up, once again, the CIP before you is consistent with the vision chapter of the comprehensive plan and our core values as outlined there. The schedule, I'll be back on February 18th for any question follow-up from this evening in any direction the Planning Commission has for staff. And then we will ask for a vote on a recommendation that I would then forward to the city manager to include in proposed budget on March 9th. As I mentioned at the outset, your staff report before you has a draft motion that is parallel to the one that the Planning Commission adopted last year, with the exception that I added another seven, "other" to give you an open-ended, if you wanted to add something, one or more. Twenty-second is a tentative budget town hall, which will include the operating budget as well as the CIP. Council's adopted, scheduled to adopt the budget on April 27th, and then by mid-May, we'll do the report back to the Planning Commission on the outcome per the city charter. And with that, glad, for the public, that's how people can find me, and I'm glad to answer any questions, as well as any of the staff that are here this evening, and provide direction for the February 18th meeting.
Thank you very much. Didn't quite hit 20 minutes, but I know we chimed in a little bit. But I thought that was very thorough and easy to understand, relatively speaking. Do you guys have any questions?
Just a quick question. The Womata contribution, the local jurisdiction contribution for Womata operating, why is that in our capital plan?
Solely for a place for transparency. And once we fund the operating, it leaves us a capital. So two years ago, we decided to show it in one place because otherwise the community couldn't figure out what we were paying for Womata.
Anything over here? Questions about the CIP? I know. This is your first CIP, right?
I have a question.
All right, go for it.
But I want to listen to other people's questions first.
Okay, all right. Anybody, I mean, I have some questions as well, but here's an easy question, I think. Stormwater is a big topic lately, and as we know, the task force is not, you know, sort of early days. This CIP has spots in it for as-to-be-determined specific efforts, correct?
Correct. So 10 dash six is a specific project sheet for stormwater?
And that's the one where you said, these are sort of staff, high-level estimates, didn't want to get too specific, because the task force is going to come back with specifics.
Correct. So we looked at six-day projects. Staff does have preliminary concept designs from the engineers because they expedited that for the task force and for this effort. So they are high-level concepts with a 40% contingency associated to it to allow the task force to really narrow down what the concept would be, the prioritization. And so we've done some approximate of phasing over the 10-year.
Yeah, so it's 1.3 in '21, 1.35 in '22, then it bumps up when presumably we have some meaty things to actually execute on.
Yeah, those would be bigger projects that would need more lead time for design and so forth. And so it's sort of phased for design and construction without presupposing what the task force might recommend. So if we have the results for the timeline before council does the final adoption, we'll be able to revise this. If not, probably for FY '22 and on, you'll see a revised project next year.
All right.
Actually, I do have a question. On the missing links for the sidewalks, you probably said this, and I just didn't pick it up. Is there a map that shows where the existing missing links are, and then maybe some type of a-
Because there was like a survey done two years ago?
Right. So we've, when we did the original effort to do the pedestrian plan, we actually surveyed all the sidewalks at that time for ADA compliance, poles, ramps, and stuff. So we have that base data, and Public Works is currently taking that, updating it with changes, and doing some field surveys. And so the map is not done, but it is in process-
Process, okay.
...so that we can do some updated cost estimating and prioritization. We know it'll be a long-term effort, and so this is why we're dedicating regular money.
And two years ago, we got public input to try to figure out the priorities. Is that, are we going to assume that that input is still correct, or are we going to have to recheck it?
I think that's a good start to roll into it. And then, of course, last year's budget, council allocated $100,000 in the operating budget for spot improvements. And so we've added, you know, six to eight recommendations from planning, from public work staff at that time. So all of that's rolling in, and then we'll be able to have a more robust discussion on which sidewalks and when. And some things may come through NTC, and if they're straight sidewalk, then now we'll have another program that we can look at, where does it fit in the prioritization?
So I think there was $100K per year that was allocated for that. Maybe eventually you can have a map that would show, you know, here's what $100K would be able to fit in.
Yeah. That's sort of the goal. And of course, this is a sidewalk-streetlight CIP project, and theoretically, somewhere between two and four years, we can get the 1,100 streetlights done, and then it would all be for sidewalks.
Am I correct that that's the only CIP expenditure that actually has a payback?
The lights, yeah.
Probably a monetary construction, unless we're looking at, there are some minor maintenance or safety issues, but yeah. The rest are more-
The schools have a big payback. All of our kids get smarter. In theory, right?
This is a quantifiable one on the operating budget.
Okay, so I'll just follow up on your stormwater question with the opportunity. The six to, I have a few questions on stormwater. The six to eight projects that staff has identified, are those inclusive of the projects that are listed on page, the backside of page 10 dash six? Is that, that set of, oh, that's 2016 to 2019, so-
Those are completed projects. So the six to eight are the new ones that were identified. And Mike can add to any of the details. As we went into the stormwater issues and responses to the community after the July 8th flood in particular, and then past history of known issues that we need to address.
So one of my concerns about stormwater infrastructure is the fact that we don't have a green infrastructure plan in place. And I just wanted to just flag what green infrastructure means, which I know our stormwater engineer knows better than I do. But just because in the staff report, in reference to the question about green infrastructure plan, it says there is no CIP project to implement a plan, but there is a focus on walkability, multimode travel, LED conversion. None of those things are green infrastructure. Green infrastructure is specifically stormwater technique. So the EPA Clean Water Act defines it as the range of measures that use plant or soil systems, permeable pavement or other permeable surfaces or sub streets. Stormwater harvest and reuse or landscaping to store, infiltrate, or evapotranspare stormwater and reduce flows to sewer systems or to surface waters. And it's important in the context of a CIP discussion because green infrastructure can lead to avoided gray infrastructure costs. So there's a lot of data, like Lancaster, Pennsylvania, their green infrastructure plan led to avoided capital costs of $120 million. And there is a number of studies that show the financial benefits of green infrastructure. So I guess my question is, are we thinking about green infrastructure when we think about capital improvement projects that address stormwater? And why are we looking for opportunities for avoided cost? And are we thinking about green infrastructure and private projects? Because stormwater doesn't care who owns the property.
So thank you for the definition, the clarification, and we can correct the staff report. In answer to the core point, yes, we are looking at how to do cost avoidance on sanitary sewer and capacity. And part of the capacity issues, you'll see a $10 million in FY '22. We've actually left it in '22 while staff works more on the timing of capacity, but also really what are the ways to reduce the capacity, stormwater being a large part of it, the I and I, best practices, and so forth. And actually, I think Mike found the discussion on the site plan that you're reviewing very helpful, because we do want to look at, while we don't have the formal plan in place and the task force is focused on specific projects, what can we do to partner on developers where they might do the, we put in the capital costs and they maintain it. We had done a preliminary look at options with our faith-based community who have a lot of parking lots, and could we do some BMPs in there? And then we do the capital and they maintain it. So I think now that we have new staff on for the stormwater and sanitary sewer, we can make some progress in that area.
I mean, I think that's a really good point. Since we're going to be spending a lot of money on this in the coming six to 10 years, we should be smarter about how we spend that money.
Yeah. $14 million is a big investment.
At least, wait till that task force comes back.
And that's, you know, it's, obviously, it needs to be an ongoing effort, because even with this, six-day project doesn't address all the issues. And so there have to be other ways to address capacity and I and I. And of course, a lot of the I and I is also private laterals. So once we get all the sanitary sewer, 49 miles line that are ours in the right-of-way, you will not have eliminated the I and I because we still have laterals and sump pumps and roof drains going into our system. So it needs to be holistic, so your point's well taken.
Will you kind of have a chart when you're assessing the stormwater fees as to how our fees compare to other jurisdictions?
Yeah, we've contracted with a consultant to do the stormwater and sanitary fee, same person, so it'll be useful. They'll do regional comparisons, they'll look at different options, and then also take into account, when do we need to issue debt, and when do we see availability fees coming in, for example, on sanitary sewer?
And one question about the library. Now, I know the original mount was in the past CIP, so it's not showing anymore, but they're obviously going to have to have another set of money. Is that not going to show in the CIP either, because that money's coming from a different source? It's from operating?
Well, it's available funding, but will actually, the budget amendment that's before council is amending the CIP. So it will show in the CIP-
Oh, it's going to show in the past.
...and it will be associated with the library project, but because it'll be adopted in FY '20 for this fiscal year, you won't see it in last year's notebook or this year's notebook. So it's legally adopted in the ordinance, but it won't show up in the CIP notebook.
Okay.
You could pencil it in to last year's notebook. Any questions over here, CIP questions, Tim or I? None? I have a question about the library, which you may not be able to or want to answer tonight, which is okay, but someday I'll want the answer, which is, and I don't remember the exact details, but a few years ago, did the CIP, library came in and said, hey, we want some dollar amount. You know, we were looking at all the stuff the city is having to cover in the upcoming years, and we said, ah, we think it's more like 8.4. And they said, okay, fine. And now it's going to be 30% more. So, and I won't accept the, oh, probably costs went up unexpectedly, answer. I'm curious, at what point does the city go back and figure out what got messed up, and how do we not mess up again? And then I have a second question, which is the exact same question for City Hall. And again, you don't need to dig in it now, but I, I've kind of asked people casually here and there, and I have yet to hear any kind of explanation that makes any sense to me. And it just seems funny, because we do this CIP process, especially a few years ago, when it was a real struggle to thread that needle, and we made some tough decisions on things, including the library, and then it just, eh, whatever, we'll just go with whatever it ends up costing. It seems odd, like it makes this process seem slightly pointless, so.
I think there's some good lessons learned, because it shouldn't be a fruitless process. So what I can provide for you is the actual presentation we did to council on the library that will answer a lot of that, but let me highlight a few points. The library, starting with the library, the CIP was approved at 8.4. It was a cutback without real concept and designs behind it, and they worked to make it fit. And those were 2014 numbers that they were working with. So that is the same situation that we had with City Hall, because the first tranche of money was FY '12 and the last was FY '16. So by the time you did construction, things had changed. Yes, some of it was escalation, but that's not the whole story. Also, for the li- Also, for the library, from the time of 2014 till they started getting the construction costs, the streetscape, streetscape standards were adopted and different for Park Avenue, and so they needed to accommodate that. The stormwater retention requirements had changed, so they had to accommodate that. The 2014 cost estimates did not include any low voltage IT-related. They were all going to reuse it. Big lesson learned from City Hall, you included in the GMP, so it is included in the, as well as IT, AV and IT. None of that was in the 2014 numbers, which was not realized at the time in which the CIP was adopted. So, you add AV, IT, security, streetscape and stormwater and escalation, and you come to the $10.9 million project.
So, you're saying we made like a lot of mistakes, not just one or two? I guess then my question would be, of all these things we looked at here, and it's in the CIP now, have we taken into account the fact that a lot of them aren't going to happen tomorrow, and so whatever the cost is today, probably, like, like that seems to be, that seems to be a weird, you know, like when we approved the library, I, or has there been delays in the library that I'm unaware of, that were unexpected, and do we know who caused it? Because the other problem with libraries, we did a referendum, we, we all voted on it. And I think if we had done a referendum at 11, 12 million, it might have been a different result, and it's.
Yeah, it was 2016, so a lot of the delay has been finalized in design, knowing we were going to be over budget. What was the options to stay within scope and not VE it and get it to budget? Couldn't it, then the community dialogue, design dialogue, the budgeting dialogue gets us today? I think we have learned lessons very strongly from City Hall that's been built into the library because we did not proceed.
Right.
Until those issues were resolved, and actually, we had full construction permitted plans. One of the things that happened on City Hall, the, the guaranteed maximum price quote from the construction company, the C Mar, was based on the first round of plans and first comments of site plan, but had not gone through permitting review and weren't the final construction docs. So, when they bid, they didn't have, so we had a lot of change orders as a result of permitting.
I know. City permitting is tough.
Yep. So, I think those lessons learned, I feel very confident on the school, high school project because those were taken into the C Mar negotiated GMP. On the broader concept for things that aren't facilities, all the transportation projects have built in contingencies. And so, for example, the out-years in '27 to '30, we escalated them again this year. And also, the reason you see transportation projects jump so much is we have gone back and done good new cost estimating on current scope, and all he's been getting line item contracts and design so we can replicate traffic signals with all the ped heads and the pedestrian crossings and off dominion poles. And then we escalate. So, I feel much more confident now. It was some very hard lessons learned from some recent projects.
Yeah, and you know.
But the CIP before you, we feel, is right-sized financially.
Yeah, and we're, you know, I think we were fortunate that it seems like it's sort of working out, and we're going to be able to get the library done. I think if things had gone a little bit differently, we'd be in a real pickle, having sunk a lot into it and then potentially not being able to actually do it, so.
But I will share the presentation that we did, so it'll give you more details.
All right. Any other questions? I have one last comment, but you can ask more questions, as many as you want.
I have so many questions.
Go till 10:30, and then we have to make a mush.
And then we'll vote on it, right? Okay, it's almost time. Well, thank you for the report card on the comprehensive plan. I thought that was helpful. And I, and I asked for it, so I am tremendously grateful that it's here. There are some gaps. So, under housing a complete community, short-term, which granted is 2022 to 2024, so it's, I guess, not in the current cycle. There's nothing on providing local funding for a public-private partnership. What is the thinking in terms of funding affordable housing commitments?
That will be an operating budget discussion.
Okay.
So, the Department of Housing and Human Services will have that submitted as an unmet need for discussion. So, the, the report card for the comp plan was really targeted towards CIP. So, working with Mr. Stoddard, we narrowed down some of those actions. So, because that one, for example, is in operating, you don't see it listed here.
Okay. And then I guess my next question is maybe more for the rest of the commission, which is, so we're, we're going to be asked to recommend the CIP next, at our next session? And I guess I don't have a sense of what the recommendation, I mean, is there, is the idea that there's a more robust conversation, or not a more robust, but like an equally robust conversation at the next session, and then we're providing feedback, or?
I think, I think the idea here is if, if we have changes that we think we want to see, now would be the time to bring them up. Because when they, at the next meeting, it'll be sort of like, okay, you guys ready? And if we bring up changes then, we won't be, really be able to vote on. In terms of what we've done in the past, we have from time to time in this motion mentioned some changes. And then generally speaking, city council declines our suggestions. But, but I do think over the years, over the years, our suggestions have moved the needle a little bit, so they're not, they're not pointless. But, but if there are, and we obviously have to agree on them, but if there are things we'd like to see changed, you know, in the past, we've moved school projects around, we tried to, we tried to make the library more affordable. You know, we've done some things like that. We, we could definitely do that, but it would be good to identify those tonight.
How?
So that, so that they have a chance to update it and come back.
Yeah. Because we have to see if it actually fits within the funding.
Now, if there's just sort of like high-level guidance we want to give, we can sort of spitball that next time. But, but if we wanted to specifically say, hey, I think maybe moving this project back two years and another project up two years. I will say, we've tried to do that before, and these guys say, we're not, we're not dopes out here. We've laid it out here for pretty particular reasons, but, but we can always ask and see. So, if you have any ideas.
Well, I guess I just have questions or discomfort around the stormwater piece of this because we don't know.
Yeah, that one is tough because there's no specifics. It's specifically, it's purposely not specific, right?
And it can't be specific.
Correct.
By the time we decide on it.
And that's where maybe in your motion, if, at sort of the high level, if there's clear direction that you want to message, that's where the planning commission has used the one through six, one through whatever, that you want to specify. And either now or before the 18th, if you pass that message on via the planning staff, or if they're comfortable directly to me, I can revise that. If there's something on stormwater, for example, because that wasn't a high-level issue last year, we can call it out.
Yeah, so you're.
Or some of your points on EPA, for example, my apologies.
Yeah, no, so you, I mean, we could, we could specifically mention green infrastructure, certainly in the motion, because that's, you know, not particularly specific, so just for them to think about. If we wanted to ask for an update on stormwater, we'll probably get it anyway, but stormwater stuff, when it becomes more solidified, we could do something like that. You know, suggesting more money or something probably would be a little odd since it's all kind of a high-level guess anyway.
I guess I'd like to propose that we provide some guidance that green infrastructure, we don't have a green infrastructure plan, which is unfortunate because we're in part dealing with that now, but that, that green infrastructure be integrated into stormwater projects, that we are wisely using our money. That there be, you know, efforts to cost-effectively integrate green infrastructure. And, and my other concern is, are we capturing water at the 10-year storm? Because that's the regulatory requirement. Are we going beyond that and doing a trade-off or cost-benefit analysis of capturing something more like the 25, 50 or 100-year storm? And what, what storm level are we looking at?
Need to defer to Mike on that. You want to come up and answer, I'm not sure where in your project design, I'm assuming at least 10-year?
Yes. We're using 10-year now, but part of the criteria that the task force is using for determining priorities includes what we, basically a cost benefit. If we can get, if we're on a part of the curve where we can get higher benefit for lower cost, we're going to go there. If we can get a 15-year for 5% more, we'll go that direction. With regard to green infrastructure, there's really two parts of every plan. One is the hard, get the flow through and maintain the infrastructure, keep the infrastructure where it should be in asset management. The other part is using green infrastructure. So, I just made a note here to go back to the consultants and make sure we have a green infrastructure component to all of the plans to date. Right now, they've focused on the hard gray infrastructure, the hydraulics and the hydraulery to solve the flooding problem. But the green infrastructure needs to be part of it, and it will be.
I think so, because an EPA has a study of 17 different case studies where it's been cost savings of anywhere from 15 to 80%. So, I think we're maybe missing something if we don't look upstream.
Yeah, no, we'll be looking at that. The, it's, it's an important part of it, so.
The thing I noticed is like, the things that we have in our, our comp plan that we haven't done is a green procurement policy, the climate risk assessment, which we have on our own work list, and an infrastructure policy. So, one of the things we could say is that it's imperative that we get these policies together and active before we do our next CIP, especially because we're going to head the hump next CIP where we can't do much, but right after that, we're going to start coming down where there's going to start to be some flexibility, and it would be a shame for us not to be ready for that. You know? And also, when the, we'll know more about what the stormwater projects look like next year, it would be good to have these policies as well. So, that's something we could add to it.
Is that, yeah?
So, accelerating the green infrastructure plan, for example? From a medium-term priority to a shorter-term priority?
I think so, because I think that.
We're sending money now.
As we're looking at these, we just, we, we know we need these policies, we do not have them. It's clear that, you know, so we have a stormwater task force right now, maybe the next task force has to start working on some of these policies. If that, maybe a task force approach would move it faster, so we can put that in there. You know, look at, what do we thinks? It sounds to me like maybe the infrastructure policy should, is the primary one we should get done. And so, maybe that's our next, you know, because we seem to get things done faster with task forces sometimes.
Bold statement.
I definitely can put something into your motion if you have some specific language besides my notes and listening to your tape. I welcome you providing direct wording.
Yeah. If you think of something, send it to Cindy, otherwise we could wordsmith it next time. All right, I think we're almost done. I think CIP, always the most fun part of our job. Yours too, I'm sure.
Indeed.
But I do think, I think we'll look back, we're probably about halfway through, like a 10-year CIP window that's fairly historic for the city, you know? And then 50 years from now, we'll look back and we'll say, I mean, I'll probably be dead, but other people look back and say, wow, I can't believe they managed to do that. I know, you know, when I first joined the planning commission, I don't know how long it's been now, but the idea that we could build a school and still do other things, it seemed basically impossible. And knock on wood, it seems like we're doing it, even, you know, it hasn't been all perfect. We've had some challenges, but, so I'd say very impressive, a lot of credit to Mr. Wadisca for being at the helm for three of those years, and obviously, Ms. Mester, huge shout-out to you for that. But this looks pretty good. I think a little tweaks, the stormwater related. Otherwise, I don't see any major, I mean, as, as we know, we're sort of somewhat limited in what we can do, but I think it's laid out well and has always taken advantage of grant money and all kinds of programs that nobody knows anything about. Very valuable. So, if less or something else, nothing else? Anything from, oh, go.
Just really, just a compliment, with each year, this, this notebook gets better and better, better. It's more clear, it's easier to follow, the, the groupings are, make more sense. And so, I just appreciate the continued improvement on this notebook, so thank you for that work.
It's a great team effort, so I'll pass it on beyond those that are here with me tonight.
Gary, we have anything else, Gary? We're good?
That's it.
Thank you, commissioners.
Ageren, thank you.